Okay, Judge, gonna let us know?
Do you plan solo? Yep, we're up. And therefore, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. And I'm gonna do that, as well ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, if we could.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We have our new clerk in action tonight, Sandy Wasson. So, good evening, Sandy. No pressure, but I'm gonna ask you, if you wouldn't mind, to give us your first roll call.
Councilmember Malama?
Here.
Shippers?
Here.
Spohman?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Mayor Barnett?
Here. Thank you very much. First up is our approval of our agenda, and it looks like we are going to amend it slightly. So, Mr. Petcha, how would you like to do that, and where would you put the amendments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the City Council. As you know, we received a request Friday afternoon for an appeal of a Freedom of Information Act request that was fulfilled. I would like to add that appeal hearing just above the City Manager's report and below appointments on the agenda. There's actually two hearings, there are two appeals, one with respect to vehicle mileage and the second with respect to education.
Where is?
It would be just to create a section above the City Manager's report.
Is there reason to not do it where the other appeals are?
The other hearings, or we could do them under public hearings. This is really...
Is that it?
It is me either.
Or I, under City Manager?
Got it.
Okay, so we're gonna settle with it between appointments and City Manager's report unless anyone agrees otherwise, and we'll soon find out.
Put it as "I" too.
Okay, well, open it.
I make a motion to approve the agenda with the addition between appeals and City Manager's report.
Thank you very much. Any support for Councilmember Spohman's motion? Could we have support?
All support.
Thank you. With that, any other discussion on the agenda? Mr. Petcha, anything else?
Not at this time.
Okay. Sandy, I'm coming to you again. Would you give us a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett?
Yes. Motion carried, thank you. We have an agenda, an amended agenda for tonight. Next up, our public comments. We have a nice group of the public here tonight, and thank you all for coming out again. At this point, we do have the public comment portion of our meeting. We have a second one, which will be near the end, and it's actually entitled "Public Comments," as on the second-to-last page for those of you that have an agenda. But, public comments are open. We do ask that you limit your comments to three minutes, if at all possible, and it's a good opportunity to tell us what you're thinking and what you want us to know. So, we're gonna open the public comment at this time. Anyone wishing to come forward, please do. If you could give us your name and your address, if that's all right.
Good evening. My name is Jim Hegarty. I am from Grand Rapids. I work for the civil engineering firm of Pryne &amp; Newhoff, which recently opened an office in Cadillac. I have some comment, which you will have a copy of, regarding Agenda Item 7-G, and I would like to start with a question. Would you prefer I hold my comments until you are addressing that item, or would you like to hear them now?
Okay, Jim. Let's just go to the City Manager. Mr. Petcha, what's your pleasure as far as from the staff side of input from Jim on, it looks like, one of the items for tonight?
I believe that this is with respect to the sewer and water grant item that we're gonna be looking at considering making a motion to go with perhaps a different provider, and so it might be beneficial for Mr. Hegarty to share with us his thoughts during that item itself, I'm thinking.
I'd be happy to do that.
Okay. We'll do our best to not miss you, Jim. Feel free to start coming on up when we get to it, and we'll make sure you have an opportunity to speak at that time. Thank you for coming tonight. All right, public comment, here we go. Crystal, how are you doing this evening?
Pretty good, thank you.
Could you give us your name and address?
I'm Crystal Johnson, South 33-and-a-half Mile Road, Cadillac, Michigan. I am the chairperson for the animal control advocacy group, our advisory committee for the county, and I'm not speaking as representative of that tonight, but I just wanted to make you aware that that's what I normally hold when I'm talking about these items. What I wanna go over just real quick, is I know that you've been meeting with different people about the possibility of closing the shelter, keeping the shelter open, someone taking it over. You're in a position where you are the tenant of the building, and the county is actually running it from you. So, I just wanted to keep you up to date as to what's going on. Our advisory committee did come up with 10 points of vision that we are working on. They are having a new but experienced management for the animal welfare part of the shelter, which we are looking at a 501(c)(3), if it's at all possible. There were IRPs put out, they were put out prematurely, it was before the advisory committee was even built, but other groups within the area I have been talking with that may be interested in eventually making a bid on that portion of it. Right now, there's a millage taking care of it, and the county is, you know, running it, the sheriff is in charge of it, but eventually, that millage will run out very quickly, probably within the next nine months. So, we're hoping to have a situation that can be beneficial to everybody. Transparency was number two, of course, that's in all of the records, and making sure that everybody understands the budget, what's available, what the needs are for a future shelter. An oversight committee, to make sure that things happen the way they're supposed to, reports are being done, the animals are being cared for in a proper manner. Expansion of the shelter, the shelter's too small, the intake of the animals is huge. The building actually needs to be bigger, needs to have quarantine units, needs to have more dog runs. The intake of the animals is so extreme, that really, if you don't have more than 26 animals taken out of that shelter every week, whether that's being adopted, or fostered, or other means, then it becomes overloaded very quickly. Within a week and a half, it's full. And then you have alternative motives that are not really great that you have to seek. Training for them, PR training, so that different situations are handled, and people understand when people are coming in to adopt, you know, that you have a really nice, warm, pleasant atmosphere. Going for an animal welfare millage, a welfare millage, not a control millage, this would take care of the animals. Right now, animal control is handled by the Dog Act of 1919, which guarantees that if you have an ordinance for handling dogs, then you have to handle dogs, and that's all there is to it. You don't have to keep 'em past the five or seven days, but you do have to handle 'em. So, cats are obviously an issue, because they won't be taken care of with the new ordinance that was passed by the county recently. So, when this millage is up, those are some concerns that a 501(c)(3) could take over. We also have reduction of costs, there's a lot of things that we could save money on just by having a 501(c)(3) taking care of business. Expand our collaborations, which is what some of the groups in the area are working on right now. The networking of fostering, adoption, span, neuter programs, there's another group that I am involved with, that we're working pretty heavily to see what we can do about, you know, making sure that that streamline of those 26 animals a week gets, you know, kicked up speed, so that, you know, maybe it can be 30 animals a week, and we're never full of them, which is, you know, the optimum goal. A quarantine area is a must, that shelter does not have one, it needs at least 10 runs, so that animals can be dropped off when they're picked up by animal control and evaluated before they're put in with the rest of 'em. God forbid that animals should come in and has something that is contagious, everything in the shelter would have to be put down. So, we need to start working on, you know, quarantine no matter what, and there are several groups that are looking into that as well, possibly getting some donations. Hopefully, I'm not getting over my three minutes, but I'm going as fast as I can. And a clear budget, there needs to be a clear budget, so that everyone understands that as a citizen in this county, of how much money is being spent, for what, with their taxpayer dollars. And we don't have that, but we are working on that. So, I just wanted to make that, you know, clear for you today, that I know that a lot of people want the shelter closed, they don't like what's going on, or whatever, and there's a lot of volunteers working their hearts out right now to try to make it a better place, and I think it would be a very bad idea to close it at this point, if that were even a possibility. So, I hope that you can bear in mind, even though when you get these requests, that we do have several groups out there working pretty hard for a solution, because in nine to 12 months, it's gonna be a different ballgame, and we're gonna be looking for money. So, hopefully, we have 501(c)(3)'s that can get donations and can, you know, pad some of that.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Crystal, for sharing with us. Public comment is open, and be happy to hear from anyone else tonight. There is another public comment at the end. I have kind of a long meeting tonight with a lot of bidding, competitive bidding, anyone else? Seeing no one else come forward, I'm going to close the public comment portion, go to the consent agenda, and it looks like we just have our minutes from our last regular meeting on the consent agenda, and that's from September 16th. Who would like to make a motion in that regard? All at once.
I will make that motion.
Okay. There's a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there support?
Support.
Okay. I'm getting rolling here. With that, any discussion? Hearing none. Sandy, could we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett?
Yes. Motion carried. Next up, our proclamations, which we do have one tonight. We are celebrating the Gopher Wood Concert Series, 30th year, which is amazing. I can remember when I started, as just a person that would come to an occasional show, say, the Country Club, for example, and different places like that, and it's amazing that this has continued this long, and this proclamation doesn't do enough justice for all that's happened over there. But I'm gonna ask the members from the Gopher Wood, including Councilmember Shippers, who was one of the board members, and probably still is at this point, is that right?
Yep.
And Paul and Nancy Brown, and Shelley Youngman, I see. Who else is here?
Any of the Gopher folks? Carter Brown?
Carter Brown, of course, the unsung hero of the next generation. Carter is here as well, so we do have a total of four. T.I., get around there, and we're gonna, I wonder if you wouldn't mind come up here. I'll let me get in position, and I'll ask you to come up. Thanks for moving. Stand clear.
I thought you said you were coming up, Carter? He's gonna take the picture?
Yeah, maybe we'll have him come up. This is Shelley Youngman, by the way. Hi, Shelley. T.I., thank you for what you've done with this group as well. Paul and Nancy, these are the quarterbacks, the old quarterbacks on this team, and they've done a super job over the years. This is an amazing accomplishment, and to still be going after 30 years.
Shelley is one of the original members.
Okay.
Still volunteering.
That says a lot, anyone doing anything for 30 years. And as positive as this has been for our arts culture, our community music, and for local artists, I'm gonna read the proclamation and keep moving here, but congratulations to you. The proclamation reads as follows: Whereas Go For Wood Concerts is a solely volunteer, nonprofit organization with the mission to bring great music to the people of the Cadillac area. And whereas, in keeping with that mission, Go For Wood Concerts has brought public, world-class musical performances to Cadillac for the past 30 years with intentionally acclaimed artists, internationally and intentionally acclaimed artists, such as Mose Allison, Kelly Jo Phelps, Claudia Schmidt, Richie Havens, and more. And they did this intentionally, didn't you?
That's the whole idea.
And some of these artists, you wouldn't believe that they are international artists, and in fact, even some of our local artists are now international, partly responsible of his Go For Woods efforts. So, with that, whereas Go For Wood Concerts has nurtured young local artists, such as Rachel Davis, Seth Bernard, May Earlywine Bernard, otherwise known as Daisy Mae, formerly, Luke Winslow King, Zack Butz, and more, providing a venue from which they have launched national, and as I mentioned, international careers. And whereas Go For Wood Concerts has been an active member of the Cadillac Arts Council, has provided volunteers for the Cadillac Arts Festival, and has provided volunteers for the City of Cadillac's annual Parks Cleanup Day. And whereas Go For Wood Concerts has partnered with the After 26 Project recently to provide dinner and a show, thereby supporting and promoting their project as well. Whereas Go For Wood Concerts regularly helps provide local musicians for community events and projects, and you certainly have done that over the years. And therefore, be it resolved that I, William S. Barnett, Mayor of the City of Cadillac, do hereby acknowledge and commend Go For Wood Concerts for their ongoing contribution to the community and for their commitment to promoting the arts through music to the citizens of and visitors to the City of Cadillac dated the 7th day of October 2013. And that's a 30-year ring, and signed William S. Barnett, Mayor. It does have the gold seal, ladies and gentlemen, so it's official.
Wow.
So, likely written. I don't know who I should give this to, maybe one of the original members?
Yeah, Shelley is.
Okay. But this is to all of you, all of your board members, all the volunteers throughout the years, the musicians, the wonderful shows, people, artists who played at Woodstock at least that came here. It was just some incredible culture's been given to our community from your group, and I don't know when you started out, if you thought that would ever be the case, but it certainly was, and the hard work you've all done certainly needs to be commended and is appreciated by several of us in this community that are attending. And I know you just had a big show this weekend to commemorate that, so congratulations with that. I'm gonna formally give it to Shelley. I'm gonna ask, if you wouldn't mind, each of you, if you would just give us a little synopsis of your thoughts, looking back at the 30 years and some of the positive notes maybe that have occurred, or the public would like to...
I didn't tell if you were gonna... Shelley's good at this. I don't know. I remember the very first time we came up with the name Gopher Wood, and I don't know if people realized what that name, where that name came from, but we were all sitting around and talking about, you know, what we should name this organization, and we realized that the thing that we all had in common at that time was that we all heated our homes with wood. And so, we were all going for wood all the time, and we started discussing this in the wintertime, so I guess we had that on our mind. So, we named it Go For Wood, and that's how we came up with Gopher Wood. It was originally called Gopher Wood Folk Society, and that's my base.
Changed the name, so people wouldn't think we were inclusive.
Right.
That anybody can go, anybody can go.
Because it's not just about folk music, it's all types of music.
Well, like Louis Armstrong said, "All music is folk music." Never heard a horse play your music.
Anything else any of you wish to share?
There's lots of opportunities for other people to volunteer. We do programs every month, and we have another one coming up in a couple weeks, on the 19th, and that's with nurturing new artists. There's a group called the Excedentals, these young 18-year-olds from Interlochen, and great band, plus Elliott, who's a new singer-songwriter. So, that's coming up, and you can volunteer, and if you volunteer and help set up and break down...
Okay. Carter, do you want to come up for the picture real quick? Mr. Charlie, do you mind taking a photo? The next generation is Carter Brown.
Carter's always there helping set up chairs, and he keeps the littler ones out of trouble.
Okay, anything you want to say, Carter? Your mom and dad have been working hard on this.
I would have to call that's Carter. You should definitely go to Gopher Wood, it's pretty fun. One stop is good, and you'll live longer. And you'll live longer, you'll go to Gopher Wood.
All right. Carter, thanks for sharing that, and congratulations from the City of Cadillac to the Gopher Wood Concerts.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, guys.
Next up are our public hearings. I'm gonna let Councilmember Shippers get in position, as well as our attorney and city manager. Thanks for coming tonight, folks. And we're gonna open a public hearing right now. It's a public hearing to adopt a resolution, and it's number 2013-3021, to approve an industrial facilities tax exemption application for Metal Punch Corporation in the amount of $308,238.90. So, the public hearing is open at this time, and I'm gonna go to the staff, if I could, first, and hear from Mr. Petcha, and curious if Metal Punch is in the crowd tonight as well.
Sandra, do you know if anyone there carry Metal Punch is here? Okay. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, this IFT amount, tax payment amount, is in the amount of $308,238.90. It's for the purpose of assisting Metal Punch with acquiring variety of personal property improvements, which are listed within the packet, some additional machinery to help maintain their competitiveness in the field and on a global platform. This IFT will help Metal Punch retain two positions locally, and is recommended that is approved.
Okay. The public hearing is open at this point. Anyone wishing to come forward and discuss this in any way, please feel free to do so. Seeing and hearing no one come forward, I will close the public hearing, turn this over to Council. Council, how would you like to handle this?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution as presented, which approves the application for the industrial facilities tax exemption certificate in the amount of $308,238.90 for Metal Punch Corporation.
Support. There's a motion and support. Any further discussion or discussion at all? Just another huge chunk of money being invested into our industry, and it's more good news for our city, and continues with the trend that's been historic recently. We just have another one coming up tonight, that's another million, I think, as well, so congratulations and thank you to Metal Punch. Any discussion besides that? Hearing none. Sandy's ready to go. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett?
Yes. Motion carried. Thank you. Next up, and we do have some folks from Michigan Rubber here again, we're gonna get them out earlier tonight, by 7:30 maybe. This is a public hearing to adopt Resolution 2013-3022, to approve an industrial facilities tax exemption application for Michigan Rubber Products in the amount of $501,113 even. And I will open the public hearing at this point, and I'll turn to the staff again for a little table setting. Anything on this, Marcus?
Just briefly mention before Representative Michigan Rubber perhaps steps forward that this will help retain six positions at the local facility. And it's, again, it's for new machinery. I'm not sure if you'd like this.
Okay. We do have the folks here tonight, if they care to join in. I'm gonna open it up totally to the public, see if anyone wants to talk about this or weigh in. You certainly may feel free to do so. And the staff, a couple of staff members are here, we'll allow them to be anonymous tonight, but they're in the House again, and thanks for coming back. Anything you want to share with us? Are we pretty good on this?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else from the public hearing? And seeing no one come forward, I will close the public hearing, turn this over to Council. What's your pleasure?
I would like to make a motion to adopt the resolution to approve the application for an industrial facilities tax exemption certificate for Michigan Rubber Products in the amount of $501,113.
All right. Good. There's a motion on the table? Could we have support for that? Support, we do have support. Any discussion? Just like to thank you again for investing in our community, and six positions is six positions, this is six families that pay bills, do commercial activity, and appreciate the stability they've had over there, so thanks for continuing to invest in our community. Any other discussion from Council? Hearing none. Could we please have a roll call? Sandy.
Councilmember Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett?
Yes. Motion carried. Good job, and we got it taken care of. Good luck to you folks, and thanks again for coming again tonight. Next up are communications. I think we go to Sandy on these, but is that the case? All right, Sandy, you've got communications tonight, looks like at least a couple.
First one is a request from Joy Vandery, Executive Director for Downtown Cadillac Association, for a street closure on Mitchell Street between Cass Street and Pine Street on Wednesday, October 23rd, 2013, from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. for Moonlight Madness.
All right. I see Joy's in the crowd tonight. Mr. Petcha, do you have anything introductory-wise to say, or should we just have Joy come up, if she doesn't mind? Or maybe she does?
One, it's a great event. Two, there were no concerns by staff. I'm not sure, Joy, if you wanted to add anything?
Sure. I'm front TV, come on.
Yes.
I have a marketing person. Joy Vandery, Executive Director for the Downtown Cadillac Association and the Cali-Care Visitors Bureau. I reside at 10778 South 33 Road out in Cherry Grove Township. I actually have, you have just the white papers, but we are turning downtown pink, actually, for the event in support of the Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And this year, adding to the program, we're gonna be selling buttons to, and a portion of the proceeds of those buttons, they're a dollar apiece, portion of the proceeds goes to breast cancer research, as well as people who purchase the buttons will be able to get at least 15% off in participating downtown businesses. So, when you purchase the button, you'll get a little flyer that highlights all the activities, and it will have a list of all the participating businesses on the back. Those buttons will be available starting next Tuesday or Wednesday. So, we're really excited about being able to have Pirates take over downtown for Moonlight Madness, as well as supporting breast cancer research, so. And we will, so far, we have the participation of the city police, this EMS, the city fire department, state police, and we have several vendors that have already paid to be part of the event, and then we have several area businesses that will also be exhibiting and doing different activities and different things on Main Street during this event. So, weather provided, it will be a very fun two-hour event in our downtown, but we do have a Plan B. We do have, I have been in contact with some of the open stores in downtown, since we don't have many anymore. It's getting harder to do this, but our Plan B is to move those activities into the open storefronts. So, rain or shine, the event will go on. So, if it's raining, just bring your umbrellas downtown, but there'll still be lots of activities to do that evening, and we really appreciate your support.
So, do you envision people dressing up in pink?
I envision people putting some type of pink within their costume of some sort, absolutely.
And do you envision the police officers in some sort of pink?
I would love to see our police officers in some sort of pink.
And then, a serious question. Do you have to get permission from M.D.A. to close Mitchell Street?
This was already part of the annual request back in January that the city put together.
Yes.
So, yeah. This was pre-thought out, along with the Back to the Bricks closure, so.
I thought they might have to agree to this.
Yeah. So, it's all that planning thing that we have to do now.
Okay. Anything else, Joy? Thank you. Anything else you want us to know? Anybody any questions of Joy?
Otherwise, if you're a business and you want to get involved, or if you're a nonprofit organization, or anything, if you want to get involved, call our office at 775-0657, or go to downtowncadillac.com, and you can email me, and there's vendor applications, and there's participation information in there. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming tonight and putting this together. Anything else left unturned there, Mr. Petcha?
Nope, not at this time.
Okay. Anything from Council at this point?
I make a motion to approve the closure of Mitchell Street between Cass and Pine from 5:00 until 8:00, excuse me, 5:00 until 9:00 p.m. on October 23rd for Moonlight Madness.
Okay. There's a motion made. Is there support for that as well?
Support.
Any further discussion? Thank you very much for coming tonight and putting this together. Anything else left unturned there, Mr. Petcha?
Nope, not at this time.
Okay. Anything from council at this point?
I'll make a motion to approve the closure of Mitchell Street between Cass and Pine from 5 until 8, excuse me, 5 until 9:00 PM on October 23rd for Moonlight Madness.
Okay. There's a motion made. Is there support for that as well?
Support.
Any further discussion? Or any discussion besides the questions? Hearing none. Sandy, could you please give us a roll call?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Schoolman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett?
Yes. Motion carried. Sorry. And thanks again, Joy, for coming tonight, sharing your marketing skills as well as the details of the event. We look forward to seeing our police department in some sort of pink.
Maybe the bucking.
Maybe? Maybe? Okay. Next up, speaking of downtown, looks like we have another one, don't we, Sandy?
Yes, we have a second request from Nikki Schultz, owner of Toy Town of Cadillac, for a street closure on Lake Street between Cass Street and Harris Street on Saturday, November 30th, 2013, for Toy Town 5K Toy Trot benefiting the Salvation Army and Toys for Tots.
Okay. Mr. Petcha, any lead in on this?
We do understand that it may be a little bit chilly this time of year. We understand that there's probably not going to be a real tremendous impact to the community. But even if there is, I think, as practice has shown over the last couple of summers, we've been able to handle some real major events. And so that stated, there really aren't any concerns from the staff perspective.
Okay. I see Nikki Schultz is here, the new owner of Toy Town. Congratulations on that, start off with. Would you mind telling us about this or do we already cover it? You're good? All right. How about your daughter? Would she like to speak tonight?
Is she the new owner of Toy Town?
Yes. And she's going to be seen her up during the Moonlight Madness.
Is she going to wear pink?
She is. Yes. We've got her out there.
She's wearing it tonight even.
All right.
One question, though. If somebody wasn't able to participate but wanted to give to the cause for Toys for Tots or Salvation Army, is there a, a way they could do that?
We have registration forms and sponsor forms in the store and on our website.
Perfect.
Okay. Do you want to give us your website?
It's toytowncadillac.com.
Okay. Toytowncadillac.com. So there is a way to donate?
I'll make a motion to approve the closure of Lake Street between Cass and Harris from 8:00 AM to 1:30 PM on November 30th for the Toy Trot.
I'll support that.
5K.
Okay. And there's support and a motion. Any further discussion? Hearing, nothing else. Could we please have a roll call, Sandy?
Councilmember Schoolman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett?
Yes. Motion carried. And thank you, Nikki, for putting that together. Good luck. And your helper as well. Next up are appointments, which we have none tonight. So we will move down to the two additional items, which are two FOIA appeals, two hearings, one regarding vehicle mileage and the other education. So I guess we'll start out with the vehicle mileage. Ms. Knitz is here tonight and I assume that is the case. Marcus, would you just maybe take a little intro? Should we go to the citizen first or how would you like to handle this?
I believe it's been our practice where we give a brief intro. If the person requesting the hearing is present, we then allow them to have the floor and then bring it back to city council.
Okay.
Quick introduction is before you, you have printed out copies of everything that was emailed on Friday. In addition to that, you also have a couple of draft letters as well that perhaps could be used in going through the appeal process or discussion when it comes back to city council. So I don't have any more comments unless you'd like me?
Okay. Should we take them one hearing at a time?
Yeah, I think so.
And that is, is that covered, which hearing does that cover? The vehicle mileage?
We can do that one first. There's no, no difference to me unless it makes a difference.
So your introduction actually covers both vehicle mileage and education?
Sure.
Okay. With that, Ms. Knitz, you may come forward. And you filed two appeals, it looks like on October 4th. And?
Cindy Knitz, 715 Cobb Street. I've got the, the first one is regarding the mileage log and the vehicle maintenance log. I submitted the appeal of my August 29th FOIA. I was informed by the city. The city staff denied the FOIA in part stating that the city does not maintain a mileage log. As stated in my appeal, officers complete a daily log for each shift that they work. That includes vehicle mileage from the beginning of a shift to the end of the shift. As a vehicle is fueled with city-paid gas for duties pertaining to the detective position, I would suggest simply checking the daily log. As for the maintenance log, considering the severe disrepair of my husband's patrol vehicle, I find the city staff's response that no maintenance log exists unacceptable and untrue. If the maintenance log did not exist prior to January, common sense would indicate that one should have been instituted. To my knowledge, Officer Gildersleeve has been and still is in charge of the vehicle maintenance and/or records.
Okay. Thank you very much. You can hang right there for a second. I see we have a letter, Marcus. Did we send this out or email it today on October 7th?
No, that's just a draft letter, Mr. Mayor, that I received this afternoon.
And it's from whom?
With the assistance from the city attorney's office.
Okay. Can we just take a moment and read this? If that would be okay?
That's fine.
So the proposal for this letter that's written, is that, how is that playing into our hearing tonight?
The, the city does not have a vehicle log, a specific vehicle log for the vehicle in question. We have a vehicle list that provides a listing of all of our police vehicles, the year, the make, the unit number, the mileage, the plate number, in which we're able to identify this particular vehicle in question and what, what its mileage is. Captain Wolfile is here this evening and perhaps address some of the other questions that were raised. But if we had, you know, if we had the documentation that was requested, we certainly would be providing it. It's not an issue of us not, you know, of us holding anything back. We're providing everything that we, everything that we could. And I don't know, Matt, if you can try to address some of the questions about the daily log, that would probably be helpful.
The daily patrol log is something that's almost exclusively used by uniform patrol sergeants and officers. A lot of the work that patrol officers do is, does not require them to pull a number and open a police investigation and do a report. So they need a vehicle where they can document all the additional activities that they do and get credit for them. Things like motorists assist, serving subpoenas, giving out traffic verbal warnings, property checks, assists, standbys, money escorts, traffic control. Those are all things that they don't do a report on, but they need to get credit for that activity. So that form was designed for them to document that additional activity so they can get credit for doing it and we can also get credit for doing those additional things as a department. On there, there is vehicle mileages. That's on there because part of a patrol officer and a patrol sergeant's job is to do free time patrol duties when they're not tied up in other activities. So we have an in and out mileage on that form so we can track on days when their activity level is down because it's a quieter day that, you know, that should reflect more patrol miles have been done that they're out actually patrolling when they have time to. That form is utilized by patrol division personnel, uniform. It's not utilized by other departments. As far as the vehicle maintenance logs, when a vehicle needs repair, it's sent into a repair facility that we do our business with. It's documented there. As far as the invoice of what they've done to the vehicle for maintenance and that's, you know, we pay the bill and it's maintained in a file in finance. But as far as an actual log that documents maintenance, we don't have that. We send them in for repair and we have records for what's been done in the way of maintenance to those vehicles from the invoices that have generated for the repair work.
Okay. So what the bottom line is, it looks like that.
We don't have daily logs that would be monitoring his mileage as we do for the road patrol part of the police department. Otherwise, we would have been able to, to provide that as a part of the initial FOIA request. And then as I understand it, we don't have specific maintenance logs. Is there essentially handled by the, the company that does the maintenance for the vehicles?
Okay.
Is it?
Yes.
And the reason that, that position's treated differently than the others? I heard why the others are important to keep a daily log, but wouldn't there be a need to monitor mileage for all employees?
Well, the mileage for all the vehicles are, are maintained. Vehicle list, which was actually granted as a part of the FOIA, there's a copy of it in the packet that we have. I'll just flip to it really quick just to show you. Matt, can you talk perhaps a little bit about this report?
Well, that's a form that I generate at the beginning of the calendar year of the year where I take all the vehicle mileages down and I can track how many miles we've traveled for the calendar year for our annual report. And I can track individually how many miles each vehicle has traveled. So we do track it on a yearly basis.
Okay. So the, that position is tracked, but just not on a daily basis?
Right.
What is the, right after that form? This, I don't know if everybody's copies are, you can't even read it?
This is a gas card?
We actually provided, I believe, Mrs. Knitz electronically, didn't we?
The gas card.
Yeah. Because the photocopy was so horrible. So we, we, you know, like tried to copy so it's legible or at least better legible than what's on in your photocopy. But this is the gas card. These are all the.
So because Lieutenant Goldnick is a detective, he doesn't use the same vehicle every time?
He has an assigned vehicle, yeah.
He does, but he doesn't have to log his miles?
Not on a daily basis, no.
I would like to ask why that is. What, what separates him from the sergeants and the patrolmen? It's a city-owned vehicle. It's, the gas is used from the city gas card. Why is he not responsible to track his mileage along with all the rest of the employees?
If I can just simply add, if you look at the Admiral Petroleum Company, which is where we get our fuel from, it actually does track the odometer readings every time that card is used. You have to enter in a number, otherwise it won't discharge additional gas. Is that correct? How the system works?
Right. When they, when you purchase fuel with your fuel card, you punch in a mileage. At the time you purchase fuel, so every time you take some fuel, there's a mileage as you're going.
Were you going to say something?
Okay. So, all right. First of all, let's just get to the issue we do, is our position that we do not have documents? And that would respond to her appeal question?
Yes.
And that is the letter that we prepared on October 7th today to hand to Ms. Knitz after our?
Correct. We'll put it in formal letterhead, of course.
And, okay. Do we need a vote or how are we going to proceed at this point?
I do have another comment.
And I'm going to get to your question. I know you had a question and I'm just thinking that might not be part of the appeal, but it's a valid question. Why don't you go ahead with your comment?
As far as the mileage that needs to be punched in to use the gas card, if you look through there, there are several entries that are 00000. So you don't have to punch in the mileage of the vehicle. You just have to punch in numbers. So that's not a true wrecking, tracking record.
It's really hard for us to read these.
I could see the mileage though right there.
Matt or Owen, has one of you tried to address that question? It looks like under the 2005 Chevy Tahoe.
I would just simply say we don't use that as a mileage tracker. You're required to put something in. We don't, we don't utilize it as a tracker for most vehicles.
It looks like it's only showing that under the Tahoe, though. I don't know why. It's under the Impala, it shows the mileage.
It just depends what they punch in. And again, you can, you can punch in any series of characters, so.
Okay. All right. So it's possible we aren't tracking some vehicles.
With the card. But are we tracking mileage on all the vehicles in another way other than the card?
Pardon me?
Are we tracking mileage for all the vehicles in a way other than with the gas card?
Other than the patrol officer's dailies and the patrol sergeant's dailies and then when I track the vehicles on a yearly basis. We don't do it on a weekly or daily basis for all vehicles.
And again, that's the, that's the vehicle list. It's this that was part of the documents that were sent out.
Okay.
The appropriate motion, I think we might be saying would be to deny the request?
Correct.
Based on the fact that we don't have the additional documents?
Okay. Is there an answer to her question regarding why the one position is treated differently than, than the others?
Actually, I think, Matt, you, you mentioned a little bit about that as part of your remarks behind.
It's designed for, for uniform patrol sergeants and that because the activity they do in the field, a lot of the things they do cannot require a police report, but they still need credit for all that they do. A lot of, a long list of things, some of them that I named to you. So they fill that form out. And because one of their duties is patrol, we want to know how much they're patrolling when they have free time to do so. It has a mileage in and mileage out. Administrative personnel, uniforms, you know, plainclothes detectives, even school officers have never been required to complete that form. It's basically designed for patrol division.
Now, was this, I'm looking at the, one of the reasons for the Freedom of Information request. Did they actually track if a employee uses it for private use? Is that tracked and they reimburse back gas like I know many places do? Or is it just not a thing that's able to be used for private, personal use or?
It's supposed to be utilized for private use. It's, it's a vehicle you can, that they take home, the take-home car, but it's not to be driven around for private use.
Is that the question?
Yes.
Okay. Have we answered your question? Have we answered your question about why it's isolated? Sounds like there's more than one position. Was there three or two there, Matt?
Well, all administrative personnel, school officers, plainclothes, and any of our other civilian personnel that utilize cars to go to training, they have to not complete that.
Okay.
Four different classifications.
Okay. I think I got that. Barely. I could barely hear, but okay. Any, do we have anything else to provide Ms. Knitz tonight with regard to her question?
None on this particular one.
Questions? Okay. So.
The appropriate motion is?
Would be to deny the request.
To deny the appeal.
Deny the appeal. Thank you.
Based on the fact that it does not exist?
Right. Based, to deny the appeal due to additional documentation does not exist.
Okay. I, I do have one more question. As far as the book that Officer Gildersleeve maintained? As far as the book that Officer Gilder sleeve maintains for maintenance of the vehicle, of the police vehicles? Why, why has that not been brought forward?
I'm not aware of that book. I talked to Sergeant Gilder sleeve about this, and it said that there had been a request for a maintenance log for vehicles. He is in charge of vehicle maintenance. He said, "We don't have such a log. We don't do that." There are, there's a form that, that officers will write up if there's damage or something that needs repairing on the vehicle. And then the appointment is set up with the repair facility that we deal with, and the vehicle's sent there, gets repaired, we pay the invoice, the invoice goes on file. So we can look back to see what kind of work we've done, so we can look at them individually by going through those. But I was, I'm not aware of a maintenance log, and Sergeant Gilder said to me, "There is not such a log."
If I can add, if you'd like copies of the, of the invoices, I'd be happy to get them to you.
I would, I would like that.
Yeah, it's not an issue.
Which ones? Of, of all vehicles, or just that vehicle, or...
Detective Goldnich's vehicle.
Okay. Anything else from the city side on this other than our motion, support, and vote? If not, could we proceed with the motion then?
I'll make a motion to deny the Freedom of Information Act appeal based on the fact that such documents as are requested do not exist.
Okay. Is there support for that as well? There's support, and any further comments from our board? I would just say it does bring to light a discrepancy, or probably not the word, but a, maybe something to look at. We don't, we don't have it, so we're not going to be able to grant your appeal, Ms. Knitz. And thanks for bringing to light and educating us, and staff as well, for helping us understand why that's set up that way. I guess the word is disparate treatment with regard to mileage. And maybe that could get looked at if council wants to in the future as far as a policy issue.
I would definitely like to echo that same thing. Being somewhat familiar with how business cars are used, not to have mileage recorded for some and not for others is, I don't understand that. I think we need to take a look at that.
Well, again, we do record the mileage as part of that annual list that we have for all of our vehicles in the, in the department.
But I think it should be documented a lot more. I think we can take a look at that and how it's done, and really question that.
Okay. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? Thank you. Sandy?
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Bullman?
Yes.
Mayor Burnett?
Yes. Motion carried. All right. That's part one of the appeals. And part two deals with, if I could read this as well, Marcus.
Education records.
Yeah. Do you mind if I read this?
No, it's, that's fine.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Petcher, would you like to give us a lead in on this appeal?
The city did receive a request for an appeal hearing with respect to a FOIA received regarding verification of education records as it pertains to the additional compensation in accordance with the collective bargaining agreement that is paid out to police officers based upon college credits that they, that they have. It was essentially our interpretation that the only, you know, kind of verification records we would have to be able to verify higher education are employment, you know, the college transcripts themselves. However, as a part of the appeal, we did receive some additional clarification that transcripts were not necessarily what, what were being looked for. We actually do have some payroll records, and in fact, as you may have seen, the city attorney leaned over a moment ago, we are able to provide some payroll report documents. And so the appeal would not actually be denied as it's listed on the top. It would be, I believe, Mike, you suggesting denied or approved in part and denied in part? Is that possibly what it might look like?
No. The letter, I think, explains it best, where it says to the extent you were looking for pay, for all payroll records, your appeal is granted to the extent we can provide records for certain additional amounts.
Okay. So it would be actually a granting then? And we would be able to provide some of the payroll documentation accordingly? So, whatever, okay, I'm sorry.
I'm confused.
So there's no other information that would indicate any educational attainment?
Aside from transcripts, no. Not that we have. We do have transcripts, but we don't have anything other than that that would be able to verify education records aside from the actual official transcripts.
Okay. So we have transcripts, and that's what we asked for?
Well, the, what was asked for was verification of the...
Right. What we ask for from our employees to give them that payment is the transcript. And it's the transcript that we can't provide.
Correct. And, Mike, you could probably explain why we can't provide the transcripts. It's illegal.
Yeah, because it's prohibited by law.
Wouldn't they have a diploma or some other certificate of achievement for their...
Only if, only if you complete a degree program. However, the collective bargaining agreement does not require that one completes a degree program. You only need to obtain various levels of credit, and then you, at a sort of graduated schedule, would receive additional compensation. And I believe, Matt or Owen, if you could perhaps mention, I think there's several, I know there's several folks in the department that are receiving this benefit as well.
Yep, a lot of them are. They're listed on the...
Yep, they're listed on some of the paperwork.
Yeah.
Ms. Knitz, this is your opportunity. I think we've got enough of a lead in here to understand what's being requested, or what was been, what's been given to you so far. It looks like some, the payment information, at least the payroll information's been provided to you, but not the, the transcripts. I probably have a question on redacting and so forth in a second, but why don't you go ahead, please?
I submitted a FOIA request August 29th regarding Detective Goldnich's educational bonus. I ask for verification records and records of all monies paid in regards to the collective bargaining agreement, section 13.3, college courses. My request was in part denied. The city staff stated that its denial, in its denial, that my request for transcripts would constitute a clearly unwarranted invasion of privacy, stating exemption under the Family Education Rights and Privacy Act of 1974. Which this is a copy of. This basically states, "A public body that is a local or intermediate school district or a public school academy shall be exempt from disclosure." Not a city government. It also cited some FOIA exemptions that pertain to interpretation of what falls under that If releasing an educational record constitutes a clearly unwarranted invasion of privacy, then why did I receive educational certificates in his file?
Whose file?
Detective Goldnich's.
Certificates aren't transcripts, are they?
Three. Why were those documents included in my husband's FOIA file? High school diploma, college diploma, and graduation from the police academy. It's not a transcript. I just explained to you what they were. I would appreciate if I may continue without the whispers.
I'm trying to understand. Cindy, what was number two?
Educational certificates from different things that he's gone to and received documented.
And you received those as part of...
His original personnel file. A clearly unwarranted invasion of privacy would be the release of divorce decree or accompanying papers, which was included in Detective Goldnich's personnel file. I think that a divorce decree is much more of a personal invasion than educational records. Once again, city staff is trying to have it both ways. Choose one way or the other and be consistent. I did not request transcripts. I requested verification records. I, as a taxpayer, would anticipate that an expenditure of tax monies is completed, that there are checks and balances that are done. In this instance, as a taxpayer, I would hope that somewhere, someone had the wherewithal to verify that Detective Goldnich does in fact have the education that he asked to be compensated for as far back as I can determine, 1999. This too is in question, as city staff claims to not maintain records from every year the bonus was paid out. This statement from city staff is in a, in and of itself ridiculous, as unless the bonuses are paid in cash, there is a paper trail. It's called payroll. The bonus is paid out every October in the form of a payroll check either separate or combined with the actual payroll. Again, three personnel files have been FOIA'd. All three files have different inclusions. From application for employment included in one, background investigations included in two. Is at best a question of consistency, why would all three files not contain the same FOIable information? As my initial FOIA request, the information regarding Detective Goldnich's education, how many credits does he have? When were they completed? When were they completed in comparison to the money and bonuses paid? And what percentages of completion towards a bachelor's degree?
Anything else?
No.
Okay. What is the city's response, Mr. Petcher or Mr. Homier? I guess my first question though would be, could we redact items that are private, like I assume the grades are the, the problem here? But anyway, if someone could answer that, and I guess, that's my first thought, is there a way to make this, that it's not an invasion of privacy?
Well, we looked at, we looked at the documents that we had, and we don't think that they're subject to release. So they're exempt from disclosure. The divorce decree they're, Ms. Knitz talking about is a matter of public records on file at Circuit Court. So that's different than a transcript. It's not subject to disclosure.
And what was the reason for the not having it? Or what is the reason that the Freedom of Information Act exempts it?
Well, one, it's an unwarranted invasion of privacy. I don't think that, the, the whole issue revolves around verification records and what you believe that means to be. So, looking at a FOIA request for verification records, we reasonably construed that to also include transcripts that were on file, but that we determined were exempt from disclosure because they constitute an invasion of privacy, and there are other federal issues involved with the release of education documents. That's different from a certificate of completion for, say, attending a firearms training event. That's not a transcript. This is a transcript. So, that's where it, that's where it lies.
What's the, in the past, when we've had, for example, more recently, we had disciplinary records, we had the documents that we could review for us to see if they indeed are something that shouldn't be turned in, or, excuse me, shouldn't be released, or if maybe through redaction. But, or, I guess I'm confused, do those documents exist? Or we're saying they don't even exist, so it doesn't even matter because they're not there? Do they, are the transcripts, does that document exist with the city, or it doesn't even exist?
No, there are transcripts, although admittedly, I suppose, Mrs. Knitz now says she did not request transcripts, so it's sort of a moot point at this juncture. If she's not requesting transcripts, then I suppose we really don't need to deal with it.
I don't, well, I, so...
The issue had to do with the, how you define verification records. I don't know what that means.
But it's, the verification records are, it's all outlined in the union contract, if, I believe, that says how they have to verify. But we're, you're saying those records exist. It, it seems like if we're, what seems vague about the invasion of the privacy issue is that seems so, it's weird how the Freedom of Information Act deems that. I guess we could probably deem almost any document that way. If I would have known that, I would have thought in 2010, somebody's, a conversation by a member of this council, the mayor, in his home, without knowing he was being tape recorded? If we would have known that was an option? To me, that seems like, is it deems an invasion of somebody's privacy, or constitutes an unwarranted invasion of personal privacy. We didn't even know that. We granted that. With this, though, is it different because they are requesting a bonus, so the verifications would become, now that it's taxpayer money being used, would that open up that document to be available? Because it is something that's required to be verified by the union contract? Is that invading somebody's privacy if that's something they have to provide? If we're going under, you know, I read that...
Oh, no, whoever, just move. Stay where you are.
Sometimes it happens if you get something too close to a microphone.
I did, I noticed that Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act does deal with colleges and schools. If, if we're deeming that this is, would be a violation, then probably us even asking for verifications would be a violation as well, which I don't, I don't really believe that it is. But even the fact that we require for verification transcripts in that sense would, would constitute them the same act. I just think it would be important for us to see those so that we can make a decision if it is a violation of privacy, because I can maybe understand not the whole document, but it's common practice for us to redact. So there's, how many of those transcripts exist?
Well, it's a transcript. I mean, I don't know, I mean, you're, you're welcome to do them, I suppose, at any time. But it's a transcript. I think everybody knows what a transcript looks like. Right? I mean, in the context of the information.
Well, let's, to the bottom of it, we're, it's pretty obvious the intent for wanting it. If we could verify whether we show it or not, that the, that the qualifications were meant to get the bonus, I think it would go far, far away. If we keep it hid and just not show it, if we... If we keep it hidden and just not show it, if we could view that, if even if it's us deeming it, they don't have to put grades, they don't have to put social security numbers, but they could put, these are the classes and these are the credits. Or I would agree if we're giving in some, if they verified through degrees or diplomas, and some of them we're giving, I don't know why we would just pick some and not others. That would probably be another verification if that exists.
You know, diplomas are different than a transcript, and I know as a, as a public school teacher, my pay is also based on credits that I get, and that I have to present that documentation to my employer to prove that. My employer has those on record, but other people in the community do not have a right to go in and see that. They can go see just about everything else about my employee, including evaluations and everything, but you can't see those, those, it's, and, I don't, I'm not sure why, I just know that those are exempt by Freedom of Information Act. That's why I was asking, are these part of, and I apologize if I was rude, I'm trying to get, wrap my head around this, we just got this. But are those things part of the transcript? A list of classes completed, would that be, you'd have to create a document for, to show that?
We, I don't believe so. We do have the transcripts in the, in the file, the actual official transcripts from the, from the schools, I think, oh, was there three?
I don't remember how many there were.
There were a couple of different, different sets of transcripts, as I believe that were, that are in the file, as they would be presumably for everyone else that receives the same, the same type of benefit. Like I said, there's a list of several officers that receive the same additional compensation bonus based upon, based upon having college credits, so...
Fourteen.
You know, I don't mean to put words in the city attorney's mouths, mouth, not mouths, mouth, but we were, you know, we were advised that we can't release the transcripts, and that was all that we had with respect to verifying what we thought was the solid verification tool that, that the officer in question had, had gotten the credit. Since then, and since looking at the appeal, as the letter indicates, we do have, I just moved it away from my, there it is, we do have some payroll records that we were able to, to subsequently provide, and as I kind of muttered out with my initial remarks, essentially we can approve that tonight by motion, as part of this, part of this appeal. I'm going to ask Mike to give me the language for, for that motion accordingly, but we can approve that and then send that out accordingly this week.
Okay, hasn't that already been shared, that payroll information?
No, that's why I was trying to make a hand sign as you mentioned that, but no, that's not going to be approved.
But is it true that we do require verification for each and every employee that gets this bonus every year?
We require, I believe, a set of transcripts, Matt and/or Owen, if you can advise as to any additional annual verification, I'm not sure if we do.
All that we see on my side is the signed memo that you have a copy of as part of the release. The HR would have the, the things that should go into the...
Into the payroll?
Into the...
So, is that a yes or no?
Well, we don't, we don't receive transcripts every year, we just get a memo from the police department verifying the list of everybody that, that should be getting the, or continue to be getting the bonus. Presumably, if it's, if it's somebody new, then we would obviously have the additional paperwork that would go along with it, so...
Now, dude, I was glancing over the initial FOIA, and I'm going back to you, and then bring it with me. Was that part of your initial personnel record? Did we deny those transcripts for that reason at that time?
There was nothing in the original personnel file that I received, or in the response from the city regarding education at all. There was nothing denied, there was nothing granted in part, there was nothing given.
Would we have had to, at that time, deny those records because of the same reason we're denying them now?
That's my understanding.
Do you know why we wanted of?
Well, we didn't, we didn't provide them. Is that a truth?
Correct. If we didn't provide them, wouldn't we, in the letter, have had to say we're denying in part because we're not able to give out the educational records because of this reason?
It probably weren't asked for specifically, just the file was asked for, and we released those items in the file that were releasable.
Right, but they, they would also say we can't provide this document for this reason, we cannot provide you that document. I have, I should've brought that initial one, and I don't mean this one here, but the one that was done previously, that we had an appeal on. I'm just, because that's what led me to believe maybe the document didn't exist, that's what I figured the answer would be, because that one didn't deny her that, because it didn't, I mean, it didn't say we can't provide it to you because of, we're not allowed to provide you this. It didn't say it existed or anything, so, seems like at that time it would've been saying we have to deny in part because we can't provide you that data.
And I, I'm just speculating for a moment, but Owen, are those files maintained over in finance, the verification records?
For this payment?
Well, for this program.
Like the transcripts and stuff? I mean, those would not be maintained in my office, no.
Who has the, who has the transcripts then?
Probably HR then.
So...
Presumably it would be HR.
Presumably, meaning if, do we know, you said you've seen, we have the document.
We have the doc.
In this case, they were from HR, yes.
And so does Foster Swift, because they, they received the full packet of everything, so, which is why they were denied, because of what they were.
So, we're going to be able to provide Mrs. Knitz with some more information today and deny the appeal partially? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, we can provide Mrs. Knitz with payroll information.
To the extent, to the extent that Mrs. Knitz in the appeal said she's not asking for transcripts, it's not an appeal of the transcripts. But what it is, is then granting the appeal to the extent that we have additional payroll records that may not have been produced, because I think there are other additional payroll records that would've shown the payment, and that's what the appeal is about, not the
But those, we ended up finding out, are the verification method, is the transcripts?
Correct. Well...
That's what we've used.
You have to look at the request and then the appeal. The request was for verification records. We denied the request to the extent that it pertained to the transcripts. Mrs. Knitz has indicated, through her appeal and again today here, she's not looking for the transcripts.
Okay, we don't have to...
So, now we have the payroll records, the additional payroll records that she has indicated that she does want, and so we can provide those.
But in my appeal, I ask for the verification records. There has to be some record that is documented other than transcripts, or some way to verify that these college credits exist, that a degree exists. Why in my husband's personnel file was his high school education documented, his college education documented, and his police academy? That all was included in the FOIA. What's good for one is good for all. City staff needs to be consistent, and this has not been consistent in any way, shape,
Any, anything else, Mrs. Knitz? Thank you. Anything else from staff here as we prepare a motion? And I think maybe if any of us are interested in following up, that they could review in Mr. Petcha's office, the verification, if there's a question. Still lingering with any particular council member, I'm sure that that would be available on a confidential basis, would it not, Mr. Petcha?
Yes, actually, it would be within, with Linda in HR, she's got all the files. I don't, I do not maintain any personnel records.
But we are, we have, just as far as our practice and policy, we do have verification records that are transcripts, and that, in most cases, are, and we require those before paying out these bonuses.
Correct, and this started 90, was it 99?
I'm not sure what contract it was first in, the payment.
Okay.
It started a while back.
Part of the collective bargaining agreement with the...
I concur with the mayor. I think that's important, to put this issue to rest, if a couple of us, or all of us, or whatever number wants to, to be able to verify that. I think that's important. I only feel that I want to be able to look at Cindy and say, yeah, or no. I think it's important. I think it's important, if I walk down the street and somebody asks me this question, I can say, yes, it is there. I don't want to say, wow, I don't know, you know, I really don't know for sure. I don't want to be like that. I want to be able to say yes or no. I want to be able to verify. That's my personal, that's, like I said, I said one, or two, or all of us, or whatever, wish to.
Okay. Anything else from council? And is there a, how are we going to wrap this up with a motion and support?
I believe it would be a motion to approve, pardon.
Motion to grant the appeal to the extent payroll records are available.
And he just said it very clearly, instead of saying approve in part, it would be a motion to grant the appeal, to grant the additional payroll record, payroll records to the extent that they are available.
Okay, so that's a motion to approve in part of the appeal?
Motion to grant the appeal.
In part, with regard to payroll records?
Correct.
And that the...
That are available.
That are available.
I'll make that motion.
And I assume we're, is there anything to deny, Mr. Homier, on this, if there weren't actually, wasn't actually an appeal for transcripts?
No, I don't believe so.
So, that motion is, is correct and accurate?
Yes.
Thank you. So, there's a motion on the table, is there support for that?
Wouldn't we have to, though, if the verification records, that's part of it?
Well, okay, there's a question as to, before we approve the, or second the motion, support it. Do we need to add anything, or would that be objectionable to add language, denying the verification record, basically because those are in fact transcripts?
What, what verification record are we talking about? If we're talking about the transcripts, the transcripts are not under appeal.
Now, what I'm asking is, in her, in her appeal, she requested verification records.
Okay.
So, we need to address that regardless of what we do?
Well, she, she says, I did not request transcripts, so the transcripts are not under appeal.
Right, because her initial thing said that there's not transcripts, I think what she's getting at is that it's the verification. If those are the transcripts, or if they're not, is there anything else in there that would've been, other than the transcripts that were in there that were not given?
I think what the answer's going to be is there is nothing else in there, so that we, if it concerns you, I would say that we might want to amend the motion.
I would like to do, I would like to at least see them, so we can finalize it and get the answer. But it's all, if we don't do it, it's, I agree with Councilmember Melma, it's just going to stick out there.
Okay.
So, I, I'm sorry that we didn't have it in front of us to make that decision tonight.
Okay. Would it make sense, though, basically, if we don't have other verification records that we add to the motion, that we deny that part basically because we don't have them? Would that be objectionable, Mr. Homier, to add that, to alleviate what seems to be a concern?
No, that's fine.
Okay. Councilmember Spelman, would you mind amending your motion to include a denial as well as to the verification records, because we do not have those in our possession?
I thought we were going to verify whether or not we have those in our possession.
It was additional.
Well, we have transcripts, but not per se verification.
We, the only, the only verification records that we have, or records that we have termed as verification records are, are the transcripts. Aside from the transcripts, that's all that we have. We're denying the release of the transcripts.
Okay.
We are approving the release of additional payroll-related information that has not yet been provided. So, perhaps the, the motion for counsel to consider could be to deny the release of any additional verification records since they do not exist, and to approve the appeal with respect to providing additional payroll records to the extent that we have them.
Okay. Would you adopt, we, okay, adopting that as your motion, Councilmember Spelman?
Yes, I will.
Thank you. That appears to make sense, is there support for that?
Somebody already did, didn't they or not?
You supported, but you changed a little bit.
I don't know that anyone supported. Excuse me?
I don't think anybody did. Nobody supported the previous motion.
That's what I thought, but okay. Who would like to support Councilmember Spelman's amended motion?
I will.
Thank you. We have a motion and support any further discussion.
Now, by looking at the transcript, last time I knew about transcripts, it would say 36 hours completed master's degree, or X number of hours bachelor's degree. The transcript should be verification. I'm sure it probably is. And there should be a stamp on it.
The tran, that's...
Verifying that it is official transcript from ABC College.
Okay.
But we can't allow that, oh.
I understand that, I understand that, I understand that, but I'm just getting clear to what I want to see, so I can answer her question.
I don't know what verification records includes and does not include, because of the way in which the FOIA was posed. So, it could include transcripts, it could include payroll records, it conclude, it could include lots of things in terms of that verification records.
But the verification that Cindy is looking for would be in that, in those transcripts, because it would say completed.
But, but as I said, her appeal says she's not asking for transcripts.
I know.
So...
I'm talking about, I talked to her.
But so then, apart from the transcripts, what other verification records we have that we can release, we have or intend to release? That's the way I would phrase it.
I'm just speaking on what I want to be able to see, so I can...
You can see anything, as, as a council member, you, you can see anything. I'm just talking about, for purposes of the appeal and release of documents.
Yeah, I understand that.
In the past, we've actually had the document in front of us, so we could see it, and then we've decided. And I do, I think what Councilmember Melma says, it's right in the union contract, it specifies what they have to do to verify. To me, that would make it very easy to define the verification by what it says right in section 13.3F.
Yes, but the question is not whether or not it was verified. The question is whether or not you are going to release verification records pursuant to FOIA, and what constitutes those. It's a very different question.
Okay. It might make sense in the future to have someone review the transcripts, do a separate verification record that indicates that they qualify, and would, hopefully that would not be exempt as well, and that there would be a little more transparency with regard to concerns that are, have been expressed here on both sides of the table tonight.
I wish we, I apologize to you, in 2010, if we would've known this was an option, I would've thought, I think yours would've been a very, very strong case that it was an invasion of personal privacy, which would've caused a lot of grief to not have to... to happen.
Okay, right. Any other discussion related to the motion and support, please? Hearing none. Sandy, would you help us out with the roll call, please?
Councilmember Melama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Burnet?
Yes. Motion carried, granted in part, denied in part. Thank you for your time tonight. Cindy. City managers' report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. The first item on the managers' report this evening is the request to set a work session. Please note that I'm actually altering my request with respect to the date, and sort of hindsight, recognizing that the meeting in which I initially was going to be requesting the work session is the night before the election, in which three out of five members of city council are running, and not trying to extend perhaps that, that meeting any longer than it may, than it may go initially, even though I'm asking for the work session to be in advance. I am, you know, sending a new letter accordingly, and request that the work session be set for November 18th at 5:45 PM. We'll still get the review, annual review documentation out to members of city council accordingly this week. There's a hard copy in your packets, but Linda is back to the office, I believe, Thursday of this week, and can also get out an electronic copy as before. The only other part of this would be to see if there's a member of council that would like to volunteer to work with the mayor, and with Linda, in doing all the data compilation, and basically collaborating on all the comments from council, and myself, and performing, preparing all the final documentation that then get reviewed, so...
Okay.
But you don't need a motion for that.
Okay.
Except for some that would want to volunteer. The only motion I'm looking for, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, would be for setting the date to November 18th, 5:45. It's from next door.
All right, that's fine. And that's also Sandy's first night as the clerk for election eve.
Yes.
Eve of the election.
Yes, that's right. That's right. In fact, Mr. Mayor, if I may just add one more other comment, it was advised strongly by our relatively recent retired city clerk, that when we do have a national election, that we actually look at postponing that meeting, the eve before. Now, that's not the case in this situation, but as we look down the road, we may come forward, just sort of planting the seed now, come forward with that suggestion or that request, so. It is a lot of work, and they basically work, what is it, about 20 hours, Owen, and hearing, Sandy, well, Sandra, you don't know yet, but...
I've heard.
It's only like eight, don't worry, Sandy.
Yeah. It's big, funny.
It'd be dog hours.
Yeah. About 20 by 7.
I may make a motion to set a work session on Monday, November 18th, at 5:45, for the purpose of going into closed session pursuant to MCL 15.268A, which provides the opportunity to consider periodic personnel evaluation of a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual agent, if they request it. Support.
Okay, and there is a request in our packet?
And I'll amend the date.
And that needs to be amended, right?
Okay, recognize that. We'll get to our volunteer in a second. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Sandy?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Melama?
Yes.
Mayor Burnet?
Yes. Motion carried, thank you, everyone. Is there a volunteer, and maybe I can re-track who's volunteered in the past? No, Sheri, and...
I'll be happy to do it if nobody else is chomping at the bit to do it.
Who hasn't done it at this point?
I just did it last time, I think you were the next up on it.
Yeah?
I mean, when we're rotating, we all did it, you were the next in line, if you wanted.
I was the next in line.
Would you like to volunteer, Councilmember Melama?
Yeah.
Yes?
Yeah.
Yes?
Yeah.
All right. Okay. So if we can work together on that with Linda, that would be great. Thanks for your enthusiasm and accepting that volunteer position.
See that.
Okay. Mr. Petcha, it looks like we have a number of bids, we're going to get through these, one of which, though, we do have Jim here tonight.
Yes, that one is almost there.
Okay. Just let us know when we get there, please.
Will do. One moment, as I catch up on my tablet. The first item is the concrete alley construction item. This was actually briefed at your council meeting on October 1st. I believe Bruce is sitting there, ready and willing to answer any and all questions. It's rather straightforward. The purpose of this project is to essentially redo the alley adjacent to the Wexford County Historical Museum. Three bids were received with the recommendation going to CJ's Excavating Inc. As a part of the recommendation, we are asking for a 5% contingency, bringing the amount to $9,975. And funds are actually available in our local street fund to do it this fiscal year.
Okay, and there's a couple, I assume the percentage, there's a couple of local ones here. Are they both local, or is Dunbar in the city, actually?
Owen, or Bruce, would you like to address that question?
Dunbar is located within the city, but doesn't, organs doesn't weigh him into their low bid.
There's a percentage, what is it, 2%, 5%? Is that what?
2%, 3%. 3%. The city, if he's in the city, it's, he's within 5%, he can lower his bid.
Okay, is that what happened here? It's not within 5%? All right, I didn't crunch those, I counted on Mr. Roberts to do so. How many percent was it, do you know?
Well, $1,000 out of 10,000 would be, would be 10%, so, you know, you're in that, that kind of range.
Very good. Thank you.
That's rough, rough math.
Fuzzy, fuzzy math.
Fuzzy math. I prefer rough.
Mr. Duett, is it, is it looking like possibly yet this fall, or is this going to be?
He wanted to go on the news.
Wow, good. Excellent.
Waiting on us.
Well, thank you again for your efforts in doing that. This is a double win for the city, too, because it is a city building, and this will hopefully prevent another winter of possible water damage. So thank you for all your time you put into doing that.
Okay, could we have a motion then, with that said? Thank you.
Sure. I'll make a motion that we award the contract for the construction of the concrete alley to CJ's Excavating Incorporated, at the cost of the $9,500, in addition to 5% contingency, to allow for any engineer-approved field changes. Is that what?
Yep, I was going to mention that.
Supper, you can have it.
Okay, 5%, which is half of, yeah, times 2 is 10%. Gotcha. It's getting to be fuzzy after all.
That might be fuzzy.
That would have, that 5% would have been included in all bids, I assume?
Yep, the last couple of construction projects, we've, we've started adding on a little bit of contingency, because they'll, they'll get out there, and they say, we might need an extra curb, or a little bit longer on a, on a driveway approach, or something, and, you know, if it's an extra 500 or 1,000 bucks, and it's two weeks until a council meeting, you know, you don't want to shut down a complete project for, that's why we've been doing that.
I've got to give credit, Mr. Duett, you're, when you were doing your little looking at the alley and doing your math, you kind of guesstimated about 10,000. You were right, right on. And I'm assuming, is that going to go beyond to just do the rest of that little strip of the...
Yeah, it's all around the corner there.
Perfect. You were right on there, on your guesstimation.
Years of experience.
Okay, years of experience, there's a motion and support. Any further discussion from council? Hearing none. Sandy, could you please give us a roll call again?
Councilmember Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Melama?
Yes.
Mayor Burnet?
Yes. Motion carried, next.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the next five items are all owned by Mr. Jeff Deeler. And I was thinking that perhaps Jeff, if you just wanted to come up to the podium here?
Surely.
Your packet, maybe we can zip through them.
Okay, does that include one of those?
Yeah, well, yeah, I believe the last one is the one that's going to take, take longer, and that is true. So, at least we'll zip through four of them.
Well, we'll see.
The, I'll just, I'll just kind of run through it, but the, the first, the first item is regarding bids for a two-year contract for bio solids. The city, as Jeff has explained to us before, has Class A bio solids that we are able to produce. The recommendation is to award the contract to Biotech Agronomics, Inc., out of Belua, Michigan.
Beulah.
Beulah?
Yeah.
All right, thank you, I'm still newbie.
It's all right.
I apologize for that.
It's all right.
Four-year, almost a four-year newbie. The other bid was from a firm out of Baltimore, Maryland. The period of time for the term is October 1, 2013, through September 30, 2015, and funds are available in the sludge treatment department of the Water and Sewer Fund. Jeff, did you want to add anything about what this is, and how the rate works per gallon, or anything to...
As Marcus had said, this is our bio solids. We do produce a Class A exceptional quality, or EQ Class A bio solids, which actually means we can put this fertilizer on to a human food crop, and it wouldn't affect anything. We still give it to the farmers, we still put it on food crops that are sold to, that are fed to livestock, we don't, but if something happened, and somebody put it on a field where humans grew food, it'd be perfectly legal and, and okay. We charge, they charge us to haul it out to the farmer's field, and they charge us, you know, cents per gallon. Our old contract was a little bit more, it was a, or a little bit less, it was 3.16 cents per gallon, and we just went up to 3.3 cents per gallon. That's not bad, it was four years since our last rate increase, so. We do produce 1.5 to 2 million gallons of bio solids a year. It doesn't matter how thick it is, so we thicken it up as thick as we can, to get more bang for a buck when we're hauling it, and we take it out to the, to the farmer's field. We have used Biotech Agronomics before from Beulah, actually, we were their first municipal customer. They had done casinos, Indian reservations, orchards, but we were their first municipal customer way back when, and we had them for, I want to say, maybe eight years, eight, nine years. Four years ago, Sinagro came in, underbid them, and we've been happy with Sinagro, and now Biotech Agronomics came in and underbids Sinagro. Those are the two options in this state of Michigan. We put it out on Mitten, we, you know, I know the industry, those are the two players currently in Michigan. It fluctuates, sometimes there'll be more, sometimes there's a last, but currently in Michigan, those are the only two haulers. Yes?
How do you choose your farmers?
Any mini minimo? No, we, we like close farmers, the closer they are to us, the better, because it's better for the hauler, and they can get through quicker. We do like 40 acres, or a large enough parcel that we can go to one field, and have it done in one field, rather than doing multiple fields. We do like a bigger farmer that maybe has multiple fields, so you can do a spring haul on one of his fields, and maybe a fall haul. Incidentally, you can actually haul it twice on one field in a year, if you have a crop in between, tween, that will actually take up the nutrients, but snow is not considered a crop, so it's spring and fall only on the same field. We're always out looking for new farmers. In fact, we're, we're going to maybe try to start a program where we actually sell this to the farmers in the future. Nobody in Michigan does. Across the lake, they do it, in Milwaukee, they do molyganite, and I said that wrong, but they actually dry it and bag it. I'd like to sell it as a liquid form. Last time I did the calculations, we were given about, by my calculations, about $300,000 worth of fertilizer to the farmer, and we were paying to haul it out to his field. So we're paying to haul it out, and, and it's just all, you know, for a smart farmer.
So you got that in your goals for this next year?
It's been my goals for the last four or five years, but it's tough getting rolling, Any, anything else? So I, I would be happy with Biotech Agronomics, they were a good firm.
I'll make a motion to award the contract for the purchase of bio solids injection for the period of October 1, 2013, to September 30, 2015, to Biotech Agronomics of Beulah, at a cost of 30, 3-point, excuse me, at a cost of .033 per gallon, just 3.3 cents.
All right, thank you for saving us. That is a motion. Anybody want to second or support that? Support? For support, any discussion from council? Hearing none. Sandy, could you please give us a roll call?
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Melama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Mayor Burnet?
Yes. Motion carried, next, next up?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. The next item is a purchase of ferrochloride. Ferrochloride is used to treat phosphorus in the waste stream. Three, three bids were received, and the recommendation is to go to Chimera, Camira?
Chimera.
Chimera. Water Solutions, Inc., an amount of .247 cents per dry pound. The bid prices are good through October 1, 2013, through September 30, 2015, and I'm not sure if, Jeff, if you want to mention anything about...
This one, actually, when we bid out, all three of these companies are good companies. We've used them all at various times in the past. This actually is a 3% reduction on cost on this one. The first one was a slight increase, this one is a 3% reduction in cost, so it's a good company, and I would recommend going with low bid.
When I looked at this, I had to question whether or not we were using our local bid option for this in state with the 1% differential. It was difficult for me to compute, because you said that you usually spend about $40,000 per year, and it seemed to me like instead of backing that amount out, it would be easier to calculate whether or not it fits within the 1% differential, if we knew how many pounds you were using.
Do we have a guess?
Am I thinking that through, correct, finance director?
Well, I would just take the, you know, boil it down to the simplest parts, the 24.7 cents, and raise it by 1%, and if any state of Michigan bidder is within that, then they would have the opportunity to match that 24.7 cents. And so when I took 24.7 and raised it by, I think it was like 24.9, but let me just confirm.
Yeah, it's really close, it's like within a thousandths of a...
Right. Yes, 24.9, so we didn't feel like, I mean, black and white, it was not within that threshold to offer that first state of Michigan bidder to match the price, so.
And the $40,000 figure was just a reference of what was previously.
Right, and I would assume the math would be the same way, no matter what the quantity would be at that point.
It is, depending on the waste stream that comes in. If it's a, if there's more iron in it, you'll use more this year, if there's less iron, you'll use less, so. It is a little bit dependent on the amount of flow, the amount of iron in the, in the flow, or the amount of phosphorus, phosphate, I'm sorry, in the flow, so. It is a little bit of flow-based math there, so. I think Owen has the right way of doing it, is just buy price to price to price, and, you know, if they were within it... And, you know, if they were within it, I certainly would have recommended web chemical. I, currently, we do use web chemical. So, I'm not opposed to using them, but going with our purchasing ordinance. Chimera, who we've used before, is the low bid and meets all the qualifications.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Deetland, of Mr. Deetland?
There's no additional, I mean, this is their only charge. They're not doing any transportation costs or anything.
That's it. That was very, in all of our bids, we specified that no extra cost would be associated with it. You bid what you bid.
Okay. Could we entertain a motion then? On the ferrochloride.
I'll make a motion that we award the contract for the purchase of ferrochloride for the period of October 1, 2013, through September 30, 2015, to Chimera, or whatever the pronunciation, Water Solutions Incorporated, at a cost of .247 cents per pound.
24.7 cents. Like $24.
Yeah, well, yes.
24.7 cents.
Yes, 24.7 cents per pound. You didn't like that first rate? It was cheaper.
I know. Support. I've been doing money math at school.
There's a motion and support. And some more fuzzy math.
I don't know if anybody mentioned that they're from Kansas, which was why I was trying to get a Michigan vendor. I just want to put that out there. It's not like, you know, they're in Indiana even across the border. It's a long trucking of this product.
I do believe that there's, that's their headquarters, not where all their operations...
They'll probably ship it from somewhere close.
I think they ship it actually from Detroit. But their headquarters is in Kansas.
That makes me feel better.
Okay. Sounds like we have a motion and support. Is everybody clear on that? Assuming so. Hearing nothing else. Sandy, let her rip.
Councilmember Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Burnet?
Yes. Motion carried. Liquidified chlorine.
Yes. Liquid chlorine bids are next. This is, was used to disinfect our municipal water supply. Jeff can advise as to why one of the two bids that we had received was not complete. But the complete bid and the recommendation this evening is for Alexander Chemical Corporation out of Peru, Illinois, at a rate of 83.3 cents per pound. We do use approximately 12 to 16 tons of this on an annual basis. And the term is, again, another two-year period from October 1, 2013, through September 30, 2015.
Yeah. We currently do use Alexander Chemical Corporation. When the bids came in, the Jones Chemical, Inc. bid came in with, they sent back their bid, and they said no bid on it. So, I guess they didn't want to bid at that point. So, only Alexander Chemical Corp. bid. We are going from ton cylinders to 150s. We used to use ton cylinders. You got a little bit of a, well, a huge price break, because they, they deliver such quantities. But now with two wellfields, it makes it a lot more convenient to have the 150-pounders, because before, we had all of our wells at one wellfield. So, that cost was easier to do in tons. Now with two wellfields, it just, it was taking us forever to use a ton of chlorine, taking us twice as long to use a ton of chlorine over at the old wellfield. So, we, we're going to 150s. And that did increase the price, because it is a different quantity. You know, obviously, there's a price break when you do a ton at a time instead of 150 pounds at a time. So, the price is about $9,000, well, $8,900, $8,900 more than our old for 12-ton. But it is well worth it, since we have the two wellfields, so.
Okay. Anything else from council or Jeff?
And Jeff, there were some safety and even EQ features as well that justified the increase in price.
Yeah, recently, I don't know if you guys follow it, but the, a city down south, I won't name the name, they had the ton cylinders EPA came and did their inspection, and fined that city $163,000. We had the same...
Toxic chemicals, restoring toxic chemicals.
Right. We had the same inspector come up here. We had just switched over to ton cylinder, to 150s. She verified we were over to 150s, and she said, "Have a nice day," and she left.
Otherwise, we might have...
The documents she asked for, we would have been searching in a lot of archives to find, because it's something that you don't do very often. This was our first visit in, well, '63 to '13, so in 50 years. This would have been our first visit. Just timing, you know, knock on wood. So, yeah, there is saving. It is a lot safer for the guys to handle, and a lot smaller quantities. If you do have a release, it is only 150 pounds, rather than 2,000 pounds, so.
It's good to see they're keeping a close eye on it.
Yeah, 50 years. We'll see them in another 50.
Maybe.
Well, I know they're close, right?
What? Yeah.
Could we have a motion if there are no other comments from anyone?
At least they're working, unlike...
This was a couple months ago.
This was before they shut down. They're not working now. I'll make a motion to award the contract for the purchase of liquid chlorine for the period of October 1, 2013, to September 30, 2015, to Alexander Chemical Corporation at a price of 83.3 cents per pound.
Is there support? Support? Any further comments? Hearing none. Sandy, could you please give us a roll call?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Mayor Burnet?
Yes. Motion carried, next.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, this next item is for the purchase of liquid phosphate that's used to treat iron in our municipal water supply. You will see that the local purchasing ordinance, preference ordinance did apply in this case. There were two, there were three bids received in total. Two were identical, one from a company in Florida, one from a company in Michigan. Given that they were identical, we are recommending that we go with Elhorn Engineering Company out of Mason, Michigan. This is, again, a two-year term, October 1, 2013, through September 30, 2015, at a rate of 64 cents per pound. Jeff?
Again, this is, Elhorn is an engineering company or a supplier that we've used before for phosphate. So, we're well used to the product. And actually, I think American Water Chemicals, who we use now, the two bids that were the same price. This is actually a 7% savings. So, the new price is actually 7% less than the old price.
Excellent.
So, on, you know, it will save us some money. I think about $1,200 a year on our average use. Elhorn's a good company, and I would, as Marcus said, two bids came in together. So, we, we said that we'd allow Elhorn to match American Water Chemicals' price, since it's the same price, and that's how we got it to the local guy. So, you know, either give it to him or let him match his price, which is the same price. So, we felt that at that point, that it, the spirit of the ordinance was to allow the local, most local, to get that bid.
Okay. Anything from council or any, or a motion?
I'll make a motion that we, due to the local vendor option, that we award the contract from October 1, 2013, through September 30, 2015, to Elhorn Engineering Company at a cost of 64 cents per pound.
Support.
And any further discussion from council? Hearing none. Sandy, could you please give us a roll call?
Councilmember Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Burnet?
Yes. Motion carried. Next?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. This next item is with respect to the stormwater asset management and wastewater grant application, or SAW grant, as it's been most commonly talked about. In fact, we had recently in Detroit heard some buzz about this, this opportunity, essentially to obtain a 90% grant to help with the cost of developing an asset management plan for our, for our infrastructure and for our system. I am not going to ramble on, which will be a new thing for me. Instead, I'm going to ask Jeff to explain a little bit about the process and to invite the representative from Fleisson Vanderbrink up as well to describe in a little bit more detail what it is that they're proposing. Just additional to note, Mr. Hegarty from Bryan and Newhoff is still with us this evening and also would like to provide counsel with some commentary as well. But I thought first we could hear from Jeff and the consultant, who's also currently our consultant on other utility issues.
May I ask, before we do that, are there other proposals? Usually, they're listed in here as options, and where are those and what were those numbers?
That's a good, a good question. We actually did not go out to bid for this. We were solicited by a multitude of engineering firms, four that I know offhand, and I had some other people. We had two of them that had a very interesting approach, and two of them that had the traditional approach. The traditional approach is you sign with us, we'll do the work, you pay us. And if you get the grant, you can go with the grant. And it's a 90-10%, 90-10% grant that the state of Michigan's working on. For the SAW grant, which Stormwater Asset Management and Wastewater Grant, the state of Michigan has about, I think, close to $500 million.
What were the other two?
What?
The other two proposals?
Well, it was Stantec, and it was Jones &amp; Henry. It was Fleisson Vanderbrink, and it was Bryan and Newhoff. Bryan and Newhoff, yeah, was the other ones that I had actual written documentation from. So, the state of Michigan had about $500 million that they're going to...
So, you said two were traditional and two weren't?
Okay. The other, the other two, I was going to explain the grant first, but I guess I can explain the non-traditional. The non-traditional, they said, "We'll do, we'll take all the risk. Come to us, sign with us, and we'll put in for the grant for you. If you get the grant, we'll charge you. If you don't get the grant, we won't charge you." All right? The other ones were, you pay upfront. If you get the grant, you apply it to the 90-10. So, if you had a $10,000 bill, you'd pay them $10,000 upfront. If you got the grant, you'd only, 90-10, you'd pay a thousand. If you didn't get the grant, you'd pay them $10,000. You've paid them $10,000. The other ones were saying, "If you come to us and you allow us to put it in, we won't charge you anything unless you get the grant. If you get the grant, you're going to pay the 10% of the $10,000." So, there's a little bit of risk involved with putting in for the grant. The grant is extremely popular currently. They do believe that they're going to run out of money for the grant. They're going to, they accept the grant, which is for stormwater and water, wastewater. They're accepting the grants up until December 2. And, well, they'll accept it after December 2. On December 2, all the grants they have in hand. My understanding is, at that point, they will stamp them all and send them out to be verified that they're administratively complete. When they're administratively complete, they'll come back to Michigan, to the glancing. And I don't know how they're going to do it, but they're just going to assign numbers to everybody. Number one, you get funded. Number two, number three, until they run all the money that they have set aside for this year. Now, if they run all the money that they have set aside for this year, you're still in line for next year. So, if your, if your number's one of the low numbers, you might get funded. But they're assuming like in five years, they're going to run all the money, unless, unless they get other monies for this. The, the interest we're receiving from all of these vendors very much indicate that, I would assume, over time, they're going to run out of money. And that there's going to be people that apply for the SAW grant that does not get the SAW grant, just because they'll, they'll run out of money. So, the question is that we had, do we want to put, risk, pay traditional monies, do it the traditional route, and maybe get the grant, or maybe not get the grant? Or the creative approach, do we want to go with somebody that we will put their own skin in the game, that they'll do the labor? And if they do get the grant, then they'll get paid. It's a savings for us, you know, on the long haul. If we, if we don't get the grant, if we get the grant, probably isn't much of a savings for us.
I can add too, and Jeff perhaps, or Owen perhaps, may have additional commentary. But the recommendation for moving forward with Fleisson Vanderbrink was, at least from my position, twofold. Not that I had any concerns with respect to Bryan and Newhoff or any other firm in doing the work. But, one, we recently bid out utility consultant work in which Fleisson Vanderbrink was awarded the agreement. And so, there's a relationship right now that we're experiencing with that firm, which is so far so good, working out well. And, two, they offered, if you will, the no-risk proposal, whereas if, if we don't receive any grant dollars, we're not going to be out any additional money for this consultant work that they're going to be putting into the grant proposal and basically preparing the necessary documents for the city to apply for the grant. And so, it seemed like essentially an easier transition for us in moving forward. I don't know if Jeff, if you wanted to add anything to that, or Owen?
Well, yeah, I would say it's important to note that as part of that process then, one of the sort of, I guess, strings would be that kind of as a reward for their risk, once you're awarded the grant, you are billed for work to date. And it's, it's agreed under the professional services agreement that they're offering that, that they will perform the work to then do the grant reimbursable project. So, helping assist with the asset management plans and the drawings and everything involved in that process. So, that really is why we're bringing this to council at this point, because most of the other offers were below, were within the spending threshold of the city manager. So, had we gone that route, we could have just proceeded. And then if we rewarded the grant and had some projects, at that point, we could have brought, you know, project by project basis back to, back to council. So, we thought it looked like a really good idea, based on the low bid relationship from, from January and the kind of no-risk factor internally, that this would be a good route to present as a, as a proposal to the City Council.
Here tonight is David Johnson. He's with Fleiss. Only other thing I'd have to say, Marcus, is that it was the, the water system that Fleiss and Vanderbrink got, not the wastewater system earlier. A little different.
When you drink and when you flush.
Exactly. What? Don't confuse the two.
They're engineering the Phase 2 wellfield, pre-work.
And if you want to ask David some more specific questions on the SAW grant or the, his company's proposal, I'm sure he'd like that, so.
So, again, I'm Dave Johnson. I'm with Fleiss and Vanderbrink Engineering. And thanks for having us here. First, I guess I want to explain the SAW grant. Does everybody, does anybody want any more explanation on that? Like what it really is, or what it does, or?
I would.
Okay, I'll give you a couple paragraph summation of it. The state of Michigan is requiring anybody who has an NPDS permit, in other words, a discharge permit for your wastewater treatment plant, to complete an asset management plan. And the SAW grant is the funding mechanism the state is offering. And sometimes the state passes rules, and they don't provide any funding. In this particular instance, they're providing funding for the communities to complete their asset management plan. And right now, it's 90 cents on the dollar. I took a look at Jeff's permit requirement right now, and it already has the asset management plan in there, although I know there's going to be more discussion about that with the EQ. But you will be required at some point to complete it. So, my feeling with communities is that, you know, why wouldn't you take advantage of the 90% money? In fact, you know what? I looked up some statistics on Cadillac. There is a disadvantaged category with this application. And we could actually find out if you're disadvantaged previous to the actual grant submittal. if you're disadvantaged previous to the actual grant submittal. And if you're disadvantaged, if you're found to be disadvantaged by DEQ, it's 100% grant. And when I looked at your median household income level for the 2010 census, it's 31,452 with a population of 10,305. That is substantially lower than the state median household income level. And I'm not saying it's an, it's not as easy as that type of an equation. It's not like you're applying for a grant that was based on a low to mod status, which you may have heard of before, a rural development finding, or it's more complicated than that. But the indicators are that it would be well worth you submitting an application to try to become disadvantaged. If you become disadvantaged, everything that is done on this is 100% free, including anything you've done since January 2nd. Included in this can be an asset management plan, which is really an in-depth look at both your storm water and your wastewater. And when these legislators got together, they said, hey, what's causing all these overflows in the state of Michigan? Well, it's storm water entering into the wastewater streams. So they decided to come up with the asset management plan to identify the problems in these two systems. You're looking at every piece of pipe, you're looking at the value of that pipe currently, the future life of that pipe and the expected cost to replace it when it does go bad. And that goes through pipe, pump, plant, everything. So it's really a CIP, a capital improvement plan of your whole system for both storm water and wastewater. Now, one thing that the state of Michigan didn't think about when they passed this legislation, that they've kind of figured out, is that when you talk about storm water, you're talking about drains. And when you get to southeast Michigan, in a drain commissioner's district, there can be up to 1,500 individual corporate drains in a county. It's been determined that every one of those drainage districts are eligible for this application.
Oh, wow.
So his concern with the competitiveness of the program is real. And I don't think that they're going to apply 1,500 applications per county, but we're going to see more than one. Where Cadillac may only get one, a drain commissioner can submit one for every single drainage district if he so chooses. And in the end, as Jeff had indicated, they're going to get these applications in, December 2nd is the first day. They're going to stamp them all December 2nd. They're going to go out to the district offices for review. When they're found to be administratively complete and following program guidelines, they're going to be put into a lottery system. The first year, they really only have $97 million and 30% of that is going to be saved for actual loan money for corrections. So, you know, somewhere in between there is going to be the actual dollar amount that they allocate this year. So it's going to be extremely competitive. And the one thing you want to make sure you do is complete an administratively complete application, because between you and Detroit, there's no difference. If your application is administratively complete and you follow program guidelines, you're both eligible. Then it's a matter of the lottery system. That's how they're going to do it, which sounds kind of strange, but that's what the state's going to do. So if you, if they exceed that number this year and you qualify, you're administratively complete and you follow program guidelines, you'll be in line for the next year. And they'll do this in the next few years until the 450 million is gone. So, you know, I'm not saying you won't get it. I'm not saying you will get it. I guess it's a new program and, and I can assure you that our application will be administratively complete following program guidelines. We've got a full-time engineer assigned to this. That's his only job. So our applications will be right when they go in and it'll just be a lottery system at that point.
The proposal's also in your packet as well.
So our first goal is to try to get you really disadvantaged. That would be the first application we would submit, which would be in the next few weeks.
Proposal for what, Mr. Pacha?
The proposal from Fleiss and Vanderbrink. We've got a copy of it.
All right. And the other proposals are not in here?
Correct.
And it was not bid out?
Correct. We, we received unsolicited proposals from--
Okay. And which two companies again were the non-traditional?
Jeff?
Fleiss and Vanderbrink and Jones and Henry. Jones and Henry I know of, but I have not worked with. Fleiss and Vanderbrink I have worked with and they just competitively bid out another project for us. So that's why I chose them. That's why I thought that would be the way to go.
I was noticing the professional service agreement. It talks about an hourly and then a reimbursable expense. Do you have any, knowing what that means dollar-wise, do you have any concept of how many hours we're talking? Or it might have been in somewhere else, but I didn't see it. I mean, are we looking at a $25,000 fee or 5,000 or?
Remember, any expenditures since January 2nd of this year that are applicable towards this program are included in the program award. So, but what happens in this program is that you're allowed to do a lot more things than just the asset management plan. The asset management plan is a requirement. You will be required to do that. But other things you can do, and I know you've done a lot of GIS in this community, but if you want to do any more GIS, that can be included. If you wanted to do some eye-on-eye testing, some influence infiltration, in other words, a lot of the storm systems may be tying into areas where you don't know about, televising is included. You can televise. The state is even going to allow you to buy software. They're going to pay for a computer. I mean, they're, they're just throwing a lot of money into this. So as we go through this process with you and you decide, hey, we want to televise 10 miles of pipe, then we'll get an estimate. You know, we don't do that. That'll be something that's subcontracted out and we'll get the best price we can and that will be the cost associated with televising. So there's a lot of different components associated with this. And when we work out the, the project plan with Jeff or whoever you guys delegate to do that, you'll know your cost before it actually goes in.
You have to bring it back.
Right. Yes, in fact, we have to come back in November to get a resolution from council to submit this grant application.
It may have been talked about. What's the application development cost in your estimation?
That's a good, that's what I meant.
You're probably looking at about $10,000 to complete the application. So your out-of-pocket cost would be 1,000. If we can get you disadvantaged, which is our goal, it's zero. But what we're doing, what we're offering you guys here is that we're willing to get on this path with you. And if you don't get awarded this grant, you're going to have a project plan on the, on the wall, basically, that you can reference for future information. If you do get it, you know, we'll be your partners in this.
Have other communities hired you to do this?
Yes.
Jeff, this is probably a question for you. Is this a situation where we, let's say we're not awarded a grant, we can wait? Or is it a point where we got to do this at some point and may, if we're not awarded a grant, we'll have to pay the entire thing?
No, we, we don't have to do it right now. We, we run a very comprehensive, as you guys know, comprehensive CIP program. We're very up on our rates. I think a lot of the stuff that the state is going to require from us, we already do. But it is, it is free money and they are going to require us to do it at some point. So I think this was more aimed, the SAW grants, I think was more aimed at the older communities that had not been maintaining their systems, where they, you know, we all hear the catastrophic, you know, overflows here and there and I won't name the cities, but we've all heard about it. I think these are, this program is more aimed for them than it is for a community like us that is actually maintaining our systems, upgrading our systems, watching our systems and letting it grow correctly. I think it's more for the people that have neglected their systems and just, you know, now it's time for them to, the state's come in and saying, now it's time for you guys to start paying attention. So.
That stated, we're still recommending that we--
Oh, yeah.
--go forward with--
Yes, of course.
And, you know, again, the benefit with respect to the proposal that we're looking at now is if, if by some chance we're not awarded any grant dollars to move it forward, we won't, we won't see any out-of-pocket expenses for the production of the application.
What were the other bids that were for the, so we know we're turning down the application development cost?
Actually, on this one that I have from the, from Brian Newhoff on the 24th, I just brought this because Mr. Hegarty showed up, or was here, came tonight.
Yeah, but I'm sorry, I said bids. It's probably a proposal to be--
Proposal. He had a $4,000 Phase 1, but no price associated with the SAW grant application itself. So I'm assuming, and it does talk about there'd be some development of that professional fee during Phase 1 and Phase 2. So he had the appraisal priced out, but nothing beyond that. You know, Stantec, as I said, was, they were looking about 6,000 on theirs. So, but that was upfront and Jones and Henry was a, again, another one where you applied and you would be reimbursed afterwards or they would charge you after you got the grant.
They didn't give you a number?
No. Not that I recall. I can go and see though.
Okay. And thanks for coming tonight, David and Jeff.
If I may too, it is time-sensitive as in December 2nd is the, is the date. There's, if we go December 3rd, we're going to be way at, I mean, they'll take it December 3rd, but they'll be, we'll be way at the end of the line. So whatever decision we do make, when we make it, sooner the better, I guess, so.
Yeah, remember, you'll need a resolution in November meeting. So really, you're not talking December 2nd, you're talking your last meeting in November, whatever that is. So.
Okay. Yep. Jim's here tonight. Why don't you come back up and introduce yourself again and--
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Again, my name is Jim Hegarty. I'm a civil engineer with Prine and Newhoff. And I just wanted to draw your attention a couple items because we've been running into this same situation with most of our clients, frankly, where they're fist, they're faced with an option to do something that appears to be free, against something that we're charging $4,000 for. Nothing ever is free. In fact, you heard tonight what it really will cost to do it and what you will end up paying. We have put it up front, $4,000. At the worst, when you get your grant, it'll cost you $400. I think most of the firms that you're talking to or that have talked to you have the experience to do this and the staff, we have an eight-person team, for example, that's dedicated to this. The last point that I want to make, and I know it's getting late, is that we are local, if that means something. We just hired 12 former employees of the Wilcox Consulting and we're thrilled and delighted to be part of the community and to have them with us. It's been a wonderful addition and I think it's worked out well for them too. But I don't in any way want to undermine any of the efforts of your staff, but I think you really should carefully consider the implications of doing something for free. Just to give an example, your asset management plan could run between a quarter million and $1 million. This is not a tiny investment that you're talking about. Televising at $2 a foot, I don't know, Jeff, how many feet of pipe you have, but you can do the math on that. It's a huge number.
52 miles.
52 miles, yeah, that's a lot. You'll, you'll probably run out of money before you get it all done. But at any rate, I'd really like you to consider that. And regardless of how you go, I am a strong proponent of asset management, a strong proponent of the SAW program. I think it's a phenomenal opportunity for communities. And I encourage you to go for it with great gusto, because it's a good thing. So if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I was noticing your mention about being involved in the legislation.
Yes, we had a person from our firm on the committee that created the legislation that resulted in the SAW program. I have been, or a colleague of mine, has been attending every single meeting that's been occurring with the committee that is developing the rules for the SAW grant, because we want to keep our clients informed. And there have been multiple permutations and developments that I won't bore you with, but I think previous to me, the other speakers did a very good job of giving you many of the facts related to the program. But it's been somewhat of a moving target until today. Today's the day that the application finally came out. So we've been doing this for two years and today we have something concrete that we can go on. And it, it's met the expectations that we have, so.
Well, I have 40 municipalities picked your company when there's others out there that are putting up the upfront money, so to speak.
You know, that's a good question. I think it's because they think that we bring some value to the table. We, I said we've assembled an eight-person team. We've hired someone specifically to manage our program. We have a good reputation, I think, with a lot of communities across West Michigan. Many of those communities are existing clients of ours. I think that we have made a more palatable proposition. For example, with our application offer, we do want to be paid $4,000. We're not guaranteeing anything, but we're not tying you into working with us, for example. And I think if you read the language of that, it, it does kind of tie you in. And that's not the way we want to do it. It was a business decision, a practice decision that we made. And, you know, we've got a lot of people that have decided that this is the way they want to go. And there have been some that have decided free is better for them, so.
The other applicant has a tie-in, is what you're saying? Above and beyond just the initial work?
Oh, yes. Yes. Usually there's an agreement that goes with it that spells out obligations to, you know, it's called a contingent grant application is what it is. If you read up on grant writing, you can read about it and see what it is. But basically is, I'll write this for you for free, but you have to hire me to do the work when we're done.
All right.
And we made a decision not to do that.
Okay.
So we were, I guess you'd call us traditional in that regard.
Okay.
So.
I got it. Thank you.
All right. You're welcome. Thank you.
Hold on, Jim. Anybody else have any questions? Mr. Hegarty?
You may have mentioned it. Where's your Cadillac office at?
We are in the old Wexford County Transit Building. It's a modified Quonset hut. We invite you to come over and look at it. We actually spiffed it up pretty nicely, so.
Thank you.
And our lab's in the back.
Actually, the old Wexford County Road Commission prior--
Before that, yeah.
For those of you older in the community.
Stop in anytime.
We had an open house. I'm sorry. Some of us might have made it. I think Mr. Pacha--
We did.
Yeah.
I enjoyed the talk.
Yep. Yeah, we, yeah, it's, it's pretty nice.
All right. And how did you hear that we were taking proposals or?
Our office manager told me. She watches the city council meetings and reads your agendas.
Okay.
So, and of course, we had talked to Bruce, I don't know, a month or two ago. Time flies. But we had brought it to Bruce's attention and I'm sure that's how Jeff got our proposal, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
So is that the professional service agreement that's before us, is that just for the grant application or that includes additional services as well?
That includes council member Steven's additional services as well.
But is there a cap or how do we know for the bigger picture, picking the right company here?
Well, there, there is no, there really is no cap. It's based on estimates, is it? Well, go back to the mic.
A million dollars.
Go back to the mic. Sorry. So people at home can hear.
It is a 90-10 grant for up to $1 million. So obviously, we could go up to $1 million. I do not envision us even coming close to that.
But the question was a cap on the cost for the consultant fees.
Well, if we got the grant, you know, the, you know, let's, let's go hog wild and said, you know, they, they charge us outrageous. If we got up to $1 million, it'd only be 10% of that. So I know what you're saying is, what's, what's their cost, but it's going to be a 90-10 grant. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, doesn't cost us anything until we get the 90-10 grant. And then with the 90-10 grant, you know, there's, the first $1 million is 90-10 and then there's another $1 million you can get as a loan, I think it is, or?
About $2 million total per community.
Yeah, but I don't believe we'd ever go that far. So if, you know, taking it to the utmost at a 90-10, the most that engineering would ever cost us would be 100,000, even if they charged five, you know, 500,000, we're only responsible for the 90-10.
Can I add something to you, Jeff?
Yeah.
Again, the state is really encouraging communities--
If you weren't disadvantaged with a 10% grant, the state is saying you can use in-kind help, and your own employees can go out and actually do this work to make up your 10%. A lot of communities have a camera, I don't know what kind of camera system you have, but if you go to a certification course with your staff, you can charge your camera out at M dot rates. So, you know, there's, there's ways to do this in very economical ways. And, you know, Jim was saying, attending the meetings down in Lansing, we attend everyone too. In fact, we're sitting by Jim a lot of the time, so. It's, it's a big thing for the industry right now. This is, this is a huge shot in the arm for really figuring out what our plants and our stormwater systems look like in the state, so.
So we'd be waiving our competitive bidding process for not only the application process, but then for the, the rest of the work? Is that basically what's going on here? Maybe I shouldn't ask you that, but Orst.
I don't really believe you are. I mean, I'm basically saying, "I'll do it for free." And if you don't get that grant, you don't get a bill from Fleeson Van De Brink. There will be no bill.
Okay. But if we do, I think what he's meaning, if we, if we do get the grant, then we're waiving a lot of competitive bidding for that, the process. And I was gonna ask-
Right, that's, that's what we're asking you to do, if you read in the council communication.
But what is, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Owen.
I was just gonna add that with the timing constraints, the way that we kind of wrapped our heads around getting comfortable with that recommendation was to fall back on our last competitive bidding process, where, you know, their company was, was, you know, 20%, 25% below the next low bidder, in terms of costs, like $66,000 up to $85,000 for that project. So not that that at all guarantees the same situation would happen here, but that just gave us a comfort level in their cost structure, and, and the way that they would, would go about doing that, and doing the project, to be able to bring this kind of a, a recommendation forward, so.
I should probably ask, as a clarification, when, when the, getting these proposals, was it mainly about the grant application process, or was this, this put out for the entire process, the engineering, or, or just the grant application?
We never put anything out. I mean, we, again, the city of Cadillac has not done one thing as in soliciting bids or quotes or, or anything on this. The grant came out, and we've been contacted by multiple engineering firms, and they all, you know, a lot, some of them presented us with proposals, which was, you know, again, we, we never went out and did a, an official quoting or an official bid on this. That's, the other thing is, you know, when you're getting these in, I haven't put any parameters of what I want bid, or how I want it bid, or, or, you know, I haven't put down what we usually do in a bid, because I haven't solicited those. So having something that somebody else put skin in the game with me was very appealing to me, because I hadn't gone out there and done anything. If I would've went out and said, "I want this, 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 and you guys do all this," then I could compare apples to apples to apples to apples to apples. Right now, I'm getting people that will do this, will do, you know, I mean, there's, I'm sure there's different level of services that I'm getting from each one of these. Engineering for all good services, and they're all good firms, but it's nothing that we went out and solicited, it's something that we've been approached to do. And, and, and most of the prices have been below Marcus's spending limit, or, you know, what, you know, is it below Marcus's if it's a 90-10 grant, you know, and it's $10,000 and it's $1,000 then? I mean, I, I don't know, you know? It certainly, after the grant, it would fall below, and a lot of them fall below beforehand. And we didn't want to come back and say, "Oh, we got this grant, now we've got to do a 90-10 match, and you guys, what grant, and what 10%?" And, you know, we wanted to make you aware of it.
The other, if I, if I may, the other, what I'll call unique factor is, with respect to Fleeson Van De Brink, they are looking for the professional service agreement as well. So if, if we do get awarded the grant, whether we get awarded it in this initial go-around, or in, let's say, a year from now, we would be using them for their, you know, and their services for essentially administering or implementing the program. Is that correct, Jeff?
Correct.
And I felt uncomfortable in just simply, you know, administratively giving the thumbs up to that without first having council briefed, not just because it's a major grant opportunity, but too, because, you know, while the application cost is arguably very negligible, you know, very low, or could be nothing, you know, if we do eventually get it, while it might be about $1,000, which is still well within my spending authority, you know, certainly there's the backend of, of the implementation piece of the project, which I would assume would likely be above-
Right.
-my administrative spending authority. So I wanted to make sure that, that this was approved by council.
And also, as, as David said, we will be coming back in November for a resolution. When we come back for the resolution, those numbers would be buttoned down a lot, they'd be buttoned down, you'd know what the numbers are at that point. Now, we wouldn't obviously know what the cost per foot of, of televising, but all the professional service numbers at that point would be buttoned down for what Fleeson Van De Brink were gonna provide for us.
But the one, the one option is just, simply, hey, you were doing the application after that, then the city decides on its own.
And if we get it, we get the, it costs us 400 bucks, and if we don't get the grant, it's $4,000.
But then we have the opportunity to look out and-
We do.
But the other option, if we approve it, they're doing that, but it's-
If we get it, it's, it's 90-10 of whatever the final is, and if we don't get it, it's zero. I mean, that's a, you know, do you want to pay upfront and guarantee that you're gonna get the plan, but maybe not the reimbursement? Or do you want to say, "I'll only pay you if I get the plan"? I mean, which, but they're two different birds.
Stevens, what he's also, I believe, indicating is that you're all, we're also connecting the implementation portion to it, which is different.
Right, it is.
That's what I wanted to know.
Yeah, it is definitely different.
I think that's what you're trying to clarify, so.
Yeah.
And that's sort of like the payoff, for them taking the risk of doing it for nothing, so that if they do get it, they benefit from it.
My biggest question is, I'm trying to understand this. And, you know, it's for stormwater sewer, or, excuse me, stormwater asset management plan and wastewater asset. But I just keep seeing all this stuff related to sanitary sewer and wastewater treatment, and it seems like, you know, we've got a great system, and it's all done really well. To me, one of my big concerns is the fact that we've got a lake right here, and we've got stormwater stuff running into our lake, and we have to do everything possible to protect that lake. And so how does this fit into that? And I haven't heard that from anybody. Is that a concern? Is that a-
Well, it is, it is a concern. It is a concern. I think, you know, this grant is, and, and our experts here, that are more expert than me, can definitely go on about it, but it's more about the infrastructure that's currently in the ground, and replacing and upgrading that, rather than like going out and building a storm pond, or retention basin, or, or something like that. They want to make sure that there's no, the pipes in the ground are sound, they want to make sure that the pipes in the ground, for both watering, or for both storm sewer and wastewater, are sound, and that they're both capable of doing what they're supposed to do. If you come through, as, you know, you televise a storm and it's collapsed, obviously, they're gonna say, you know, that's gonna be part of the plan, is to fix that storm sewer. Now, if you go through all your storm system and everything's perfect and pristine, they'll probably not, you know, they won't tell, have you do anything on it. But this is to bring everything up to where it should be currently, of what's in the ground. It's not, I know it's not what you're looking for, it's something that would protect and, and enhance, but I don't think this is what this grant's for.
If I, and again, I, I might be shooting from the hip, councilmembers.
Oh, luck, now Mr. Hegarty.
And Mr. Mayor, members of the council, but almost like a rate study, where you'd have a consultant come in and look at all of your assets to determine what level of repair they're in. It's my understanding that that's what, that's what the study is going to do. Presumably, you could then base your, you know, your maintenance schedule accordingly, based on what the findings are. It'll help you ascertain also where your rates should be. And if you're looking at, you know, protecting, you know, the lake as an asset, presumably, if you had well-functioning equipment, which we do have, I'm not trying to say we don't, that would go a long way into sharing the future. Plus, I believe it's, Jim, you may have mentioned it, or Jeff, you may have mentioned it, somebody mentioned it, this eventually is gonna become a requirement from the state.
It will be a requirement.
These plans on file, so.
So, Mr. Hegarty? Actually, Marcus is absolutely right on the asset management part of it. DEQ's focus with stormwater is water quality. So you will be able to work into your asset management for stormwater, or your stormwater master plan, things that will help you improve what happens in your lake, for example, as it relates to your storm sewer system. So you will have an opportunity to tie a lot of that in there as part of your inventory and your televising and your condition assessment. In fact, one of the biggest challenges that we're concerned about is, most of our clients, when they think of stormwater, they're worried about flooding. DEQ really doesn't care about flooding, per se, they care about water quality. So any flooding issues that we need to address are gonna have to be couched in water quality terms. So to answer your question, I think there is a huge water quality component for the stormwater that you're gonna be able to do with this grant. There you go.
Okay. Thank you very much, Jim. Jeff, I assume we would lose the 5% factor for local bidders if we were to accept the, waive the competitive bidding and proceed today?
You know, that's up to you guys. I mean, free versus $4,000, I, you know, again, it's apples and oranges, I don't know how you, you know, how you guys want to proceed with it, but yeah, I would say we'd lose, I, you know, unless, unless, you know, Mr. Hegarty wants to meet zero. I mean, I don't know how you do that, Mayor. I just don't know how you do that, so.
I'm not a proponent of bidding professional services, and I'm not really here for that reason. I just want to make sure you understand that there is a philosophical difference between the approach that we had proposed-
Yep.
...and the approach that you've been talking about. And I, to me, it's an important philosophical difference.
Okay.
And I wanted you to be able to consider that as well.
Okay.
You know, I'm not a believer in bidding engineering either. I think that you, you know, you can always find a cheaper engineer, but I think if you use a quality-based election process, I really believe, I don't know if you've ever been exposed to that, it's a smart way to choose professional services. I mean, you wouldn't bid your attorney out if you got in a lawsuit, of course you wouldn't. Engineering is somewhat the same, you can end up with a lot of problems.
You'd be surprised.
Bad example.
Very good suggestion.
I think Jim and I are exactly the same on that topic. We believe, I think Jim believes in QBS also. I think there's a way to go.
It's, that's another reason.
Okay, but we could have savings on the long end if, when this is done, said and done, by bidding out Part Two, isn't that correct, Marcus? And we're, we're saying goodbye to that if we proceed today with this.
That is correct. If you, if you proceed today with what's in your packet, then, correct, the Part Two is already taken care of, if you will. Not sure how else to answer that.
But this is, savings, is this, I'm, I'm trying to, if we get the disadvantaged status, it won't cost us anything, correct? This would be completely covered by the state. So it's really not bidding to save us money.
But you're talking about the short-term savings would be-
No, 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 I'm talking about the whole thing, because the whole grant-
If we get disadvantaged, you're 100% free.
We don't have to pay anything-
All right.
...to get this for this project.
Sure, whatever the caveat is, it will really get your interest. If we can get you disadvantaged, you get a free $500,000 at the end of your project from DEQ. It's a really big thing to try to become disadvantaged. So that's our first priority, if you can get that in.
Okay. So that's conditional, their other one is getting the application accepted. There's two levels there.
Correct, yes.
And the thing is, is that if we don't get the grant with you guys, we have no cost whatsoever. If we do get the grant with this being certified disadvantaged-
There'll be no cost.
-there's no cost whatsoever. If we get the grant without that, our 10% is still gonna be-
10%.
Which you can make up in kind, and also, you've got to remember in this situation, it's like a road construction project. Your engineer doesn't build the road, he bids it out.
Right.
We don't talibide. We'll be jailing that out.
Right.
And that's a major component associated with this program.
I, I'll also, not to shoot down Fleeson Van De Brink, I'm pretty sure that Brian and Newhoff also would be looking at disadvantaged status for us, too. So it's not, it's not just one of them, they're, they're both gonna work that angle, see if we qualify. The, that would apply to both of them, if they got the disadvantaged, we would be covered 100%. It's really, the, the thought here is the $4,000 upfront, or the not $4,000 upfront. Or, and with that $4,000, what it entails, not paying it upfront, what you lose on the backend of not being able to bid, or being tied to somebody, but.
Jeff, to add something to what you said earlier, when you bring a resolution to the council to approve applying for this grant, you will have televising costs, you will have all subcontract costs, you will have a whole enchilada in there, because if you don't ask for it now, you may never see it.
Right. But we don't know if that's an act, I mean, we're gonna say, "This is what we believe, 10 miles of televising is gonna cost."
This is what we're asking for.
Right.
We fully expect televising costs to go up once this hits the street.
So.
At some point, we've got to get council to-
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a timing issue, Mr. Petcha, on this, or Jeff?
We need to have this all done by December 2nd.
Well, besides that, I mean, for tonight's meeting, and-
I think, you know, yeah, there's, I think, you know, I don't know what direction after this, if we don't act tonight, what you would have me go back and probably do a request for proposal and all that stuff, maybe, and by that time, we'd be too late. You know, it's-
But it seems like in my mind, I don't know how you could do it if we put a proposal on this grant.
Right. So the, here's the, I want, I'm sorry, are we gonna, if I'm, I'll wait until they're done, then we can talk.
All right. Did you want to say something?
I would, I would not advise putting out a request for proposal. We have, and I think they have enough work right now, that our biggest challenge is gonna be to meet the deadline. And every day that you postpone going forward with this puts you farther and further at the back of the bus. We've had many of our clients signed up for four or five months already, and we've got a head start on all of their applications, and I think they have as well. I would not recommend putting this off too long, certainly not recommend going out for a request for proposal. We've gotten a few, and we haven't responded to most of them.
So when you're forty that you have, are you simply just have agreements with them to do the grant application? Or do you have any?
Act, yes, it's the, it's the work point, there's like 10 items in the grant application. The one that's gonna require the most work is figuring out what you want to do, and what, how much money you want to ask for. That's a lot of work. That's the biggest part of the grant application that we're providing for our clients. The grant application is easy to fill out, with the exception of that one, that one block.
But if you're only, with your other agreements, it's only the grant application-
Yes. Hey, and I'll tell you, our hope is that if somebody likes what we do for them with the grant application, that they would hire us to do the work that we help them get the grant for. But they're not obligated to do that.
So this has been available for four to five months to, for municipalities throughout the state?
The application just came out today.
Yeah, the application just came out today. We have been working on this for over a year, and we began presenting it to our clients probably five months ago.
Okay, thank you.
So.
All right, Mr. Councilmember Stevens, I think you were being patient, letting the audience help us here, but what did you have?
I'm just trying to take, take the look, if we can, as, if you're on that board that's deciding grants. And I know this is M D E Q, the, they're now, the old Michigan Department of Natural Resources, similar. They have to decide on grants. They have limited money, it's tight. And I know this is MDEQ, the, they're now, the old Michigan Department of Natural Resources, similar. They have to decide on grants. They have limited money. It's tight. If you get a grant, if they understand that our grant is tied in with the fact this proposal is under the understanding, they'll do the mapping services, asset management plans, system evaluations, and engineering costs. If, I'm looking at myself as a person. I'm going to say, there's no, they want to give money out that they know is being used. If there's no tide of bidding, you know, they're going to look and say, they've already got an agreement with someone, they could multiply that rate by three times, or four times, or whatever. I don't know why we don't just get the grant application part done, do that, and then open up the rest for a major bid afterwards.
Okay. Anybody else want to discuss that, that option? Or staying where we are on course? Okay, I guess we.
Yeah. Couple things, I think, is when the resolution comes back, there will be a price on that, of what we're asking for. So as they have all said, you know, we're going to estimate how many foot, how much we want for televising that. So there'll be a price there, and really, I don't think the state care. I mean, they care, but they don't, they're not going to, they don't care what we pay as long as they get these, this program rolling, I think more than anything. But on the resolution part, we're going to have, when, when it comes back, whether it's, you know, Fleece, or whether it's Brian Newhoff, it's going to have a price. This is what we're asking for. Now, you can, you know, we can just pay the 4,000, ask for a half million, get the grant later on, we can go out and bid that out, and hopefully, we get somebody that can do what we want for that price. Or we can not pay for the grant and get it, and hopefully, we get the price. I mean, either way, it's going to be kind of a shot in the dark, I think, that you get what you asked for. You know, we asked for, we responsibly thought it was going to cost this amount. That's what we're asking for. I don't think the DEQ cares at that point whether you're tie-barded in or not to affirm, because you're asking for a specific amount, which you think you're going to use. Does that make sense?
It does, but I think they also want to make sure, I mean, you know, if, if the price is higher because of that, I think they're going to be looking at that as well, if it was them.
We're going to put, you know, 50 foot of, you know, 20 miles of sewer, X amount of, you know, whatever, I mean, whatever we're doing, will be down there. So that's what they're going to be, I think, concerned that we get that stuff down that we asked for, so. All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Anything from council before we do a motion here? Let me ask this again of our attorney and/or Mr. Petcha. When we do consider waiving competitive bidding for professional services in general, what is the rule, is it require unanimous support from council? Or is it a four out of five? I believe it to be unanimous.
I believe it does require unanimous, and I think Mike, you double check.
Yeah.
The way I see it, we could, you know, the motion to waive competitive bid would stand either way, and then the following motion would be right, if we chose to go with one group or the other.
Okay. All right, I'm just checking.
Given that.
I think council would want to know, though, either way.
No, I know, I'm just having a discussion at this point about what our options are.
That's a valid point, thank you.
So the first motion would have to be a supermajority or?
Otherwise, it's.
And then the second motion wouldn't necessarily have to be.
Okay.
And to be honest, it's a flip of the coin for me, frankly.
That was, if I may just, well, Mike is looking it up. I'm fairly certain it requires a unanimous yes vote to waive it. That was part of, at least as I mentioned, from, from where I was coming from, why we were, or at least why I was supportive of it, is because of the relationship that we have currently with Fleece and Vanderbrink. Keeping the one, the one firm working with us on, on this project as well, so. But I don't have anything against anybody else, that's for, that's for certain.
I'm just saying that, you know, with the first motion to waive competitive bidding. You'll have to do anyway.
Right.
Right, you'll have to do that regardless.
I think that's, yep.
Okay, it's not necessarily engineering or even professional, but I think if we waive.
So I'll make the motion to waive competitive bidding for professional engineering services related to the application of the grant for the Department of Environmental Quality saw grant.
And it's also for the stormwater asset management. Both parties agree to that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, there's motion and support. Is there a discussion point at this point? Hearing none. Sandy?
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Mayor Burnett?
Yes. Motion carried. We are waiving competitive bidding on this item, and we do have proposals unsolicited. Were they all unsolicited, Jeff?
They were all unsolicited.
Okay. Well, it's a popular.
Money's out there.
Money sounds like it's out there. 500 million.
I will say, at this point, I really feel comfortable of just having the application process looked at and not getting into a further agreement, you know, especially on the short notice. But I also like how they've, they're working on 40 other grants and that experience in local. I definitely would entertain going that route. I do know there's that upfront cost, but I also remember, you know, on other items where we've talked, and it's like the, you know, how long does that take to recoup through our system, even if we, for $4,000? If we don't get the grant. I just, I see that, I agree with, somebody asked the question about the short term. Long term, it may be a better thing, in terms of getting the grant awarded. But you're right, short term, it might be a cost we see, but long term, it may be savings as well.
Well, there's also a disadvantaged issue. That could be no cost at all. However, our likelihood of getting the grant may improve technically, or possibly with.
To me, it comes down to, you know, who's going to position us the best to get the grant?
Well, if I could continue, I was just going to say that, you know, we may be in a better position to get the grant. I don't know that. If we're going to bid that part out, as opposed to just having it sort of set up by our previously selected contractor, which are, is what staff's recommending tonight. So who would like to make a motion to get this moving, one way or the other?
I would make a motion, and I'm going to apologize on the pronunciation if I say it wrong, but I'd like to make a motion that we get the SAW grant application done by Prehn and Newhoff, asset management team, for the amount of $4,000. And then, the only thing I don't, well, I'm going to leave it at that for right now. I don't know if we need other resolutions and such, but.
No, that would be, that would be it. That's all for now.
May I ask a question? Does the 4,000 get the whole thing submitted as an application? Okay.
What's the answer?
Yes.
The answer is yes.
Okay. Well, that would be nice to know. Anything else? There's a motion on the table, let's take that. Do we have support for Councilmember Stevens' motion?
It's not looking like it.
I'll support that, I guess.
Okay, we have a motion and support. Any further discussion?
Jeff, are you comfortable with the, what you saw in writing from them?
What? Say that again.
Are you comfortable with what you received in writing from them, that they will give you what you need to get this?
Uh, yeah. When I got on the 24th, I saw you guys might have got something a little different today. When I got on the 24th of June, I'm comfortable with.
The 24th of June.
Well, that's when this was brought to my attention, and all the other ones were coming in, so.
All right, any further discussion? If not, we have a motion and support, and it would be for a local group. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Malama?
Yes.
No. Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Burnett?
Yes. Motion passes four to one, and I appreciate everyone's discussion. David, thanks, thanks for coming up tonight and sharing your work.
I look forward to proposing at the, when there's.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thanks for everything you do for the city. Appreciate your time tonight, and Jim as well. And thank you, council, for giving that a very close look. We'll move on to H, which we have a lot of items for our city clerk tonight. Well, sorry, city manager, as well as the clerk. She's got to work out.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor members of the city council. I am going to ask Mr. Adams, who has been very quiet and patient this evening, sitting over there, to please give an update with respect to this grant proposal. Thank you, Jerry.
My brain hurts.
That took a long time. What are you going to do?
Oh, no, Jerry.
No, no, no.
Don't tell me that. My brain hurts.
No, 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 no. Thank you, Marcus. Very quickly, just recently, in fact, after your last council meeting, we were made aware of a grant application through the Michigan Council for Arts and Cultural Affairs. And that particular agency was providing, or will provide, up to $75,000 for various projects associated with the, with the arts, or with some aspect of culture. And one of the programs that they have available are dollars associated with capital improvements or the construction or renovation of a project. Unfortunately, we had to get this submitted by September 30th, so we didn't have a lot of time. However, we knew we did have a project potentially in hand, and that is the Rotary Performing Arts Pavilion, the improvements to the pavilion and to the pavilion site. And while the master plan for that project is not fully completed yet, it was completed enough that we were able to come up with what I call the Phase One. Meant, for example, with Dean DeCrager, the project architect who's been working on that, and said, well, you know, we have, if we can get $75,000 from the grant, we also know we have $120,000 that has been committed by the Cadillac Daria Rotary Club. Thank you, Rotary. And so we went ahead, put together a grant application in the amount of $195,000. I won't go through all of the different aspects of that, I put them in your packet. But even the grant application recognized the short timeframe, and as part of the application, and again, I think this was in your packet, they had an area where they said, this application is scheduled to be approved. So they recognized that these had to be submitted, in some instances where approval by the chief governing body couldn't be received. So we indicated that, hopefully, that it would be approved, the grant application in this amount for those projects at tonight's meeting. If it is approved, then we'll submit the approval letter to them. The chances of us getting this grant are probably a bit slim. Why do I say that? Most of the grant applications tend to be somewhat on the smaller side in terms of dollars. But, but nonetheless, we'd like to try. It's not going to hurt. There's no financial commitment on your part. Again, if funded, the grant would provide 75,000. We would use the 125, 120,000 from Rotary, and we'd have a complete project. And we would be able to institute a number of physical modifications or improvements to the pavilion, which is very important to the area's arts and culture. So what we're looking for is essentially your approval of us having submitted this particular grant, and also, we'd like, as part of that motion, having you authorize the mayor to sign what we, what they refer to as an assurance, which basically says, we, we agree to the project, and we will fulfill the obligations therewith. Any questions?
Just a quick question is, under your understanding, is this a all or none deal? Or could they come back if we request 75 and say, we're going to grant you 50?
We, we talked to the agency there, said there is a possibility. They asked us, what if we didn't give you 75? What if we gave you 50, for example? Would you be able to pare things down? And we would be able to, largely because we don't necessarily have to do all these projects right now. Eventually, we do, but we did want to put together what we call a complete project. Another aspect of this particular grant, the work has to be done by the end of next year, next fall. And so, which means if we get this, and we'll know in the not-too-distant future, we'll have to actually start working on the construction specifications, put it out for bids this winter, so that construction could start in the spring. But Dean from, Dean DeCrager from DK fills, that's, that's very possible. It's, should be something we can easily accomplish.
He's on the committee, is he, right?
Well, Dean's the architect that's assigned to the committee, or that the committee has retained. Yep.
Thank you.
Questions? Just a possible opportunity.
All right.
Let's go for it.
Thank you. Could we have a motion unless there's discussion?
I will make a motion to support the grant application filed with the Michigan Council for the Arts and Cultural Affairs for improvements to the Rotary Performing Arts Pavilion and Pavilion Site, as detailed in the council packet, and to authorize the mayor to sign the application assurance letter indicating council's concurrence with the project and grant application.
Support, sorry. You should have did that.
Support.
Support. All right, we have motion and support. Any further discussion?
Just a thank you to Rotary.
Yes, I just appreciate Mike, Koye, and Jerry for turning this around as fast as they did. And they, it was really literally done in less than a week.
That's amazing.
It is amazing.
Good job.
We're going to have something at our next planning commission meeting? Maybe a little bit of an unveiling?
We'll just talk about the master plan.
Okay.
Hector, the board outside, as you walked in, maybe you saw it. There will be some modifications to that, but we've had the master plan board, the graphic outside, so the public, as they come in, can take a look and so forth.
Okay.
There's a lot of, a lot of visitation, put it that way. People want to know what's going on.
Okay. If a motion and support, any further discussion? Other than thanking the Rotary donation that's coming?
And this is only Phase One. There's going to be another phase to it. The whole project's going to cost more than that, so.
And they were responsible for the initial phase 20-some years ago, or more, 25 probably. Okay. We would like a roll call, please.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Mayor Burnett?
Yes. Motion carried. Introduction of ordinances, and we've had a gentleman here, he's been, well, he's coming up. I think there's one more for you before that. But go ahead, Mr. Petcha, I assume this is your item?
Yeah, well, actually, Mr. Adams has the next couple, which is why he's staying so close. Jerry, if you'd like to do the intro and the explanation?
This one, we're just asking for you to set up a public hearing tonight. The owners of 921 Aspen Street, it's a residential property. They have filed an application, or they did file an application with the planning commission, seeking a rezoning of that property from its current B3 general business classification to R2-1 family residential. The planning commission held a public hearing. They have made a recommendation for the rezoning to you. That information is included in your packet. At your next meeting, we will provide a full report. But tonight, we're simply asking you to approve the attached resolution, which would introduce an amendment to the city zoning map and from B3 to R2. which would introduce an amendment to the city zoning map and from B3 to R2, and to set a public hearing for that rezoning.
Okay. Thank you. Who would like to make that motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2013-3023 and set a public hearing for October 21st, 2013, to introduce ordinance for rezoning of a parcel located at 921 Aspen Street.
Support? There's a motion and support. Any further discussion? If not, let's have another roll call, please. Sandy?
Councilmember Schoolman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett?
Yes. Motion carried. Next up, Mr. Adams as well, and our applicant's in the house, I think, tonight.
Yep. And we do have something, I believe, for the screen as well on this item. Jerry, do you want to?
Sure.
Let's go ahead.
A real brief PowerPoint.
Thanks for waiting. Okay, let me just go through the PowerPoint real quickly, and then, if you have any questions. Again, what you're being asked to consider tonight is for the splitting or the dividing, so to speak, of a platted parcel. The parcel is addressed primarily as 203 East Chapin Street, really. But it also has a sub-address, you might say, 203 and 1/2 Chapin Street. Can we get to the next one here? Property owners. Here's Ross here tonight. They live at 622 Lincoln Street here in Cadillac. Go ahead. I'm not going to go through all this. Again, the parcel is commonly addressed as 203, 203 and 1/2 East Chapin Street. And again, that's just the legal, the tax ID number. Little bit closer, if I might step over here to this one. This is East Chapin Street, right here, street right down this way. This is the parcel, and it's an individual parcel, a single parcel. And if you were to visit it, you would find that on East Chapin Street, or just off East Chapin, there's a single-family detached dwelling. And then to the rear of the lot, there's another single-family detached dwelling. The lot to the south has frontage on East Chapin, I'm sorry, the house on the south. The dwelling to the north has frontage on a developed alley. And so essentially, that's how those two properties, you might say, are accessed, so to speak. Okay, so, okay. As mentioned, the parcel contains two single-family residential dwellings. The lot itself is 50 feet wide by 144 feet deep. It's a very typical lot to this area. And I've already mentioned, a lot on the north accesses the alley. The lot on the south accesses, or the home on the south dwelling accesses East Chapin. And the applicants, and they can speak to this in a second, they wish to divide the parcel. Basically, they want to create two lots, with each lot possessing a dwelling, which is the typical or the norm for the city. I won't get into these, but you'll see these in a second. Parcel A, it's the lot to the north, would be a somewhat, a little bit smaller lot. It would end up being 60, 50 by 60. And the lot to the south with that dwelling would be a little larger, 50 by 84. The reason for the difference, it really relates to the two homes. The home to the south is quite large, the home to the north relatively small. So they kind of apportioned it relative to the size of the home. Also, each of the lots with these dimensions would be able to accommodate the necessary parking on-site. So it works out. Okay, go ahead. Again, parcel A to the north, parcel B to the south, so to speak. I should have pointed out, too, you'll notice that, and I'm not sure when this happened, but the lot to the immediate west some time ago was divided. Okay, so this is not something that's unusual or unheard of. Okay. And essentially, Section 20.4 of the city code, it governs amendments like this. And because this is a platted lot, formally subdivided, myself, a staff, nor the planning commission, we can't just automatically approve this. Although this did go to the planning commission for their review, and they did, in fact, recommend approval. The code very specifically says that the city council, by resolution or ordinance, you're the ones that can approve the division of a platted lot, and so that's why it's here tonight. Go ahead. The planning commission, in reviewing this and in making their recommendation to, or to recommend approval, two basic findings. One was the fact that the site contains two existing single-family residential dwellings on a single parcel. Under the zoning ordinance, that's not permitted, by the way. So really, it's a legal non-conforming situation. And what would happen, even though the lots would be somewhat undersized with respect to zoning, each of the homes would have their own unique or own individual lot, which is, again, typical of what happens in virtually all of our single-family residential neighborhoods. And then secondly, they also looked at the fact that each of the parcel would have direct access to a public right-of-way. Now granted, one is a street and the other is an alley, but nonetheless, for purposes of getting into and out of the parcel, they wouldn't have to cross each other, okay? They would have direct access to a public right-of-way, both of which are, in fact, developed. Okay? These are a little bit hard to read, but they did, in making the recommendation and the applicants aware of this, they did do so, attaching a series of conditions. And these conditions are pretty typical of what the planning commission has put forth in the past. I won't go through these in a lot of detail. These were in your packet, and they're also in the resolution, I should say. One was completion of a boundary survey to make sure we know where the lot lines are. Once these parcels are created, we want to make sure that there's a survey so we know, and future property owners know where their lot is located. We would like to see that, or the planning commission would like to see that recorded with the Wexford County Register of Deeds and a copy provided to us. And that costs for surveying and registering would be borne by the applicant. Secondly, we'd like to see each parcel, each dwelling, I should say, provided with independent municipal water and sanitary sewer systems, with individual connections and individual metering. What we don't want to have is, for example, is to have both of these homes connected to the same, you know, water main with the same meter, likewise, with the same sanitary sewer situation. If we had that situation, what if one person, for example, his or her system goes out? Is it going to affect the other one? Likewise, what if one doesn't pay their bill? Will it affect? So we want separate systems. And we talked with, I don't know, Jeff, yeah, there's Jeff. We talked with Mr. Dietlin about this, and I believe Jeff's in agreement with this. Okay, go ahead, let's go ahead. Thirdly, same thing with energy and communication systems. We'd like to see the two sites, you know, if they're going to have these services, to have independent services. Number four, also, in some cases, it may require, for example, let's say the parcel on the south needs a water main, or let's say the parcel on the north needs a water main, and that water main has to run through the parcel on the south. If there are some cross-connections with respect to the land, we want to make sure that proper easements are in place so that those utilities can be built, and if they have to be maintained, both property owners can get, or have their contractors get to them. Pretty, again, pretty standard condition. And lastly, I believe, number five, the planning commission, the parcel, the south parcel off of East Chapin, doesn't currently have a driveway. Doesn't have a curb cutter or a driveway. It uses the parcel to the back. And the planning commission, as a condition, recommends that a hard-surface driveway be constructed at the dwelling for the use of those occupants. And that's basically what we're asking for tonight. Mayor, the applicant is here, and he may have something he wants to offer.
Okay. Ross, how are you doing tonight?
Pretty good.
Thank you for your patience. I'm sorry you ended up on the bottom of our agenda.
I appreciate you having me here. Yeah, our main motivation, we started, we lived in the south house B and rented out the north house, which was great, paid for 80% of our mortgage. Since then, our family grew, and we had to move up the hill. And we've had tenants in it for the last six years in both houses. And they're a lot harder to supervise when you're not right there. And we've had some pretty ugly evictions. So that's kind of our motivation. They are both for sale. And most people that would buy that caliber of a house were not able to qualify for the loan because there's two houses there, and the bank doesn't think that those people would need two houses. So it was kind of tough there. So I just changed realtors last six months or so, and our new realtor suggested splitting the lots. And that's kind of where we're at here. And that would open up an opportunity for, you know, two new potential landowners, you know, kind of reduce the transient population. City of Cadillac, I know that's a big thing for some people. So that's kind of where we're at, you know. And the lot just west of us, as mentioned, already has that split. The people that I've noticed, I believe they're both still rentals on the west side, too, but they don't seem to have any issues with that. So the water lines and the sewer lines are just east of where the sidewalk comes in. And we've, they are separate because we've had to turn the back house off, which we call A, the back house, to deal with some plumbing issues. And the front house still had the water, and they're on separate electric meters and all that kind of stuff, too. So the biggest transition we'd have to do is put in the driveway in a place that it wouldn't go over the water line and sewer line. So any other questions for me that I didn't cover properly?
Sounds reasonable to me.
There's other homes in the city that are similar to this, aren't there, Jerry?
Yeah, they're sporadically located.
I'm thinking of one on Nelson Street.
Right, but there are other situations that are very similar to this. In fact, I was looking at 1-2A that's probably about three blocks from here.
Okay.
So their address remains Chapin, then?
The address would remain Chapin, would remain just like it is now. Right now, it's addressed, 1-2 to the north is addressed 307 and 1/2.
Jerry, be careful.
I will.
Okay, does anybody have questions for Ross tonight? I'll just point out that this did unanimously pass through the planning commission. It's in your, the minutes are in there. As well as a nice report by, I don't know, are the minutes in there as well? The report is very nice, and they should have been.
So when something like this happens, do the surrounding neighbors get notified?
No, the planning commission is required to hold a public hearing on something like this. But we do, just as a courtesy, let people.
So there was a public?
Yeah, we, not a public notice, but we just let adjoining property owners know what's going on.
Sentimental letter or something like that.
Yeah, mhm. But there's not a public hearing requirement for us.
Thanks for the presentation.
Yes, very well done.
Thanks for your consideration.
You're welcome. Okay. Who would like to make a motion if there's no discussion?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2013-3024 to approve the division of the parcel located at 203 and 203 and 1/2 East Chapin Street.
And that would be under the conditions that?
With, under the conditions as presented.
Thank you. Is there support for that motion?
Support.
There is, and any discussion? Good luck with your sales. I think this is going to work for you. All right. Sandy, could we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Schoolman?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett?
Yes. Motion carried. Good luck. Thanks again for waiting for us tonight.
I think it's from Michael McNamara.
A or B?
In, in A.
It's a nice, it's an odd location because it's on the, it's just like having a...
But it's real accessible.
Yeah. You don't notice it's there going up and down Chapin. There's a house on the alley, and there's a couple others, actually. It's from the early days of, I'm going to guess, of Cadillac. Mr. Petcha, you've got a, not necessarily a new IFT, but a transfer, so we're going to count that as more investment, at least in some ways.
New for Cadillac.
Yeah.
New for Cadillac. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This next item is a request to set a public hearing for October 21st, 2013, for the consideration of a request from Spencer Plastics, Inc. to transfer seven IFT exemption certificates, industrial facility tax exemption certificates, in the amount of $1,046,457. As, Mr. Mayor, you just mentioned, these are not new exemption certificates because Spencer Plastics already has them. But Spencer Plastics is new to Cadillac. And so this investment would be certainly new to our city, which is great to see this company move in and set some roots and perhaps expand as well down the line. So this is great news for our community and certainly our industrial park. And it would be appropriate tonight for you to consider setting a public hearing for October 21st, 2013, to transfer the certificates.
So what are the remaining years that we're transferring?
They're actually listed on...
Do they all, does it vary?
They do.
Yeah.
If you look under, like, the applicant information under five, it'll tell you, you know, the first parts of the year, so...
So that was the year that it was awarded?
Yes. And then it's the remaining years.
Okay.
On those. I did, I will mention, Mayor Barnett, that I did talk to Jay Theville. He's the one that represents them. He will be here at our next meeting. He did talk about that, and, you know, knowing that we were just setting the public hearing, he did mention that he'll be here next meeting. And that'll give us a chance to thank him, too, for his efforts, because this is exciting. It's another million dollars that's coming into Cadillac. And those will be all jobs that will be coming in. I think he said it's about 20 jobs, so that'll be...
Isn't this investment already here?
It's not, it's...
They're still located. They're locating here.
Yep.
And they may, I don't know if they're fully, if they're fully in yet or not, but it's certainly something that we didn't have a year ago. It's, no. The other thing, councilmembers, that I was going to point out, councilmember Schoolman, the question about the years, just to give you the quick range. There's seven, there's seven IFTs that are being transferred over, or being considered to be transferred over. One is from 2011, one's from 2010, 2009, 2006, 2005, 2004, 2003.
Aren't they 10 years to?
12 years, I believe. Owen, is that correct? 12-year IFT?
I believe they all were 12 years, yeah.
Okay.
I didn't hear otherwise, so whatever, because if you look, some of them are like from 2004, I think, even.
Three.
So, yeah, so there would be probably only a year of that one remaining. Because we'll be on the 2014 tax rule as of December 31, so...
And how do we know what municipality they're transferring from?
The...
Music area? Music.
It is, it's in the resolution under where Spencer Plastics...
So they're all coming from the same place?
Yes. Matter of fact, he mentioned that they're so busy, they're doing seven days. It's just making it hard to transition some of it because they don't have, it's not like they have two days in between to move the equipment. They're running seven days, so I'm sure he'll be giving us more details next meeting. And I'd like to make a motion, if we could, to adopt Resolution 2013-3025, which will set a public hearing for October 21st to consider the request from Spencer Plastics Incorporated to transfer the seven industrial tax exemption certificates, which amount to $1,046,457.
Support.
Motion and support is made. Any further discussion? Hearing, not, Sandy?
Councilmember Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Schoolman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett?
Yes. Motion carried. Reports and boards of commissions, we have none of those. We do have minutes from the airport authority.
Also, this Saturday, there is a speaker going to be at the Cadillac High School Auditorium. It's sponsored by Alex T. Harrison Memorial Foundation and the Escape Bar and Grill. It's at 7:00 PM, and it's Greg Baird, who is a nationally-known speaker, is going to be there. He's also humorous. It's supposed to be quite entertaining, talking about community, inclusion, bullying, hate, finding your legacy, things that are all interesting and useful. And there apparently will be some questions and answers at the end, and opportunity for discussion. So on your Saturday evening, if you're looking for a way to help impact your community, that would be one way. I think that's all. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Councilmember Stevens, it looks like you're next.
Thank you. I first wanted to note, on a sad note, you know, for the city of Cadillac, the passing of Jim Frisbee, being such a big part of Cadillac and making it 100 years. But it is a sad day. I mean, the commitment to the community, and I remember talking to him in 2006 when he was like 94, and him telling me how he stays young. But just wanted to pass a note to the family and friends of Mr. Frisbee that it's noted the contribution he's given to the Cadillac community. Mr. Petcher mentioned football, and I am excited to think that this year in 2013, the mayor's been able to, I know a couple of council members may get the timeframe, it took a while to recognize them, but the mayor was able to recognize the girls' volleyball team, the boys' basketball team, and I have this feeling that you're going to be doing a proclamation recognizing the football team. So that's a pretty good year for 2013. And again, thanks, Mayor, for the time you put into that. A lot of the activities this, been going on this fall. I wanted to mention, a lot of them are activities we plan on, but what Mr. Dolak said, I have heard a couple of comments, too, from our police department, also for our school liaison, Jason Straight, for his role with helping with the schools, Lincoln School especially that day. So it's always nice to, you know, Mr. Petcher, if you could pass that on to the police, you know, the recognition they give them. And then lastly, I just wanted to quickly note, I don't like, as you know, I usually don't like when you're hearing rumors. I also don't like it when there's accusations made on ethics. But I wanted to clarify, I don't know how many people received it, but one of the candidates, Carla Filkins for mayor, put out a fundraising letter and chose to kind of smash the city council, and then saying that we need to get back to our council manager form of government as the charter defines. And I don't know how many people received this, but I want to make it very clear that to me, as you know, because I brought up charter violations in the past, to me, that is very, very strong charge, and it doesn't have any backing to it. So I just ask, it's unfortunate it's gotten into this direction, but when they're going to attack us, I want to make sure we're defending the council, but also the staff, just to say that we're not, we have been in a council manager form of government. We have an attorney. Matter of fact, we're probably more in that form of government than we ever have been the years I've been involved. So this is mainly just a notice out to whoever would have got that, to please disregard that, and I'm sad that that has come up, but by no means are we violating it, because that would be a violation. That could be a misdemeanor, too. So I don't like getting charged with something that we haven't done. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. I'm sorry. Councilmember Spelman?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Councilmember Malama, you got any thunder left over there?
Oh, well, I did have three, but now I'm down to two. First of all, I want to thank the organizers for the Fall Festival that, two weeks ago, Car Show and the Beer Festival or whatever.
I feel good about that.
And I believe the Visitors Bureau did it. It was beautiful weather and a great crowd. It was an excellent, excellent event, and thank you for the parties that are involved in putting that together. And the other thing is, is that Issues and Solutions over Coffee will be at Clam Lake Beer Company, formerly The Shea, and it'll be this week Wednesday at 10 o'clock, and I hope to see many of you, and we'll share a cup of coffee and, yeah, talk about city.
Okay. I'm not going to share anything tonight. I'll hold off on that. And we have Mr. Petcher over here.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. At this time, it would be appropriate to, I have a motion moved into closed session to discuss pending civil litigation in the case of City of Cadillac versus Jim Blackburn and Herring versus City of Cadillac, the discussion of which in public will be detrimental to the city and trial settlement strategy. Is that loaded?
Hang on. Hold on, Mr. Petcher?
Yes, sir.
Sorry to bother you, but I think our, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought that we had just put in there the Blackburn case only. Could you check that to make sure that we're not going against our agenda that we approved earlier tonight?
The agenda does only include the Blackburn case, and I'm sorry, I was just reading a handwritten note from Mike on the additional case as well. I don't believe that causes an issue, but unless you don't want to talk about it.
No.
So where are we?
Yeah, either way. I mean, it's up to the, it's up to the city council whether or not you want to discuss it in closed session. I can update you if you'd like or not.
What was the Blackburn and Herring?
The Herring case is a?
Well, you mean, well, we could, as long as we do it as a motion, right? We could add that in.
Okay. What's our pleasure here, then, council?
Say add it in.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're going to adopt the motion that Mr. Petcher just discussed, and who was going to make that?
How he said it, I don't know.
Oh, all right. I'll make the motion to go into closed session for the reasons as stated by the city manager.
I can read them again, Bill, Mr. Mayor. It would be a motion moved into closed session to discuss pending civil litigation in the case of City of Cadillac versus Jim Blackburn and Herring versus City of Cadillac, the discussion of which is, the discussion of which in public would be detrimental to the city and trial or settlement strategy.
What he said.
Thank you. And is there support for that?
Support.
Thank you. Sandy?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett?
Yes. Motion carried. We'll be back.
Where'd you get this signal?
Are we good? Okay. Let's have a motion. We're back in, we're coming back.
I make a motion to return to open session.
Support.
Motion in support. Can we please have a roll call? Sandy?
Councilmember Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett?
Yes. Motion carried. We'll be back.
Where'd you get this signal?
Are we good? Okay. Let's have a motion. We're back in, we're coming back.
I make a motion to return to open session.
Support.
Motion in support. Can we please have a roll call? Sandy?
Councilmember Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Barnett?
Yes. We're back in open, the motion is passed. We're back in open session. Is there anything to report from staff or any council member?
Not at this time for me, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council.
Anything from our council? He's kind of silent, and council as well. All right.
Anything from our mayor?
Not tonight. Motion by the mayor getting adjourned.
I had my foot way over there, too.